I call together the Monday, August 17th, 2020, School Committee Meeting. As a point of order, we are opening our School Committee Member Meeting, and then what we'll do is we will take a motion, a second, and a vote to enter into a public hearing as far as the discussion of reopening of school. So, we don't have minutes from the last meeting, so that's not something we have to deal with right now. So, I guess of the School Committee, as it is compromised right now, I will take a motion to open up public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, I have a motion, I have a second, roll call vote. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kacoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We are now in public hearing. With that, I'm willing to bet, we've got, you know, Mr. Hackett, you've got a few things you want to, points you'd like to make?
I do, thank you.
Okay.
Just want to pull up a different slideshow.
Okay.
For the interest of clarity, I'm going to just put my mask like this, and also in case I try to drink water, I take a couple of times, so. Yep, well, good evening, everybody. Just wanted to kind of just introduce this by saying that the assumption on the slides for tonight is that you have already seen the slides that were presented in the last meeting. If you need to see those again, or if you need to see any information regarding our reopening plan, we do have a website too, and you will be able to find everything there, including the recording of this meeting tonight, prior meeting recordings, all the plans that have been presented to this point, some frequently asked questions are now posted on that site as well. We will continue to fill those out as we go, we get to as many as we could, and some of the questions that we saw come up actually are answered as part of this discussion tonight. I would first also like to thank Mary Beth McGrath from the Town Health Department, Health and Building Division Department, she's the Director of that department, as well as Jean El-Sali, who is our Director of Nursing, they are both with us tonight, we're going to do just a brief overview on a couple of health and safety questions, I mean specifically around how we would manage, both in coordination with the town, any infections that would happen, that might happen within the school, whether it be students or staff, so that everyone can have an idea of what that would look like, and then to make sure you also understand the coordination and work that goes on between, and has gone on between, the School Department and Mayor's Office and Ms. McGrath's Office as well. And then we're going to do a brief update for you on new information on hybrid and remote learning, we've been doing work on that, obviously, as we continue to go along, we think the slides that we present there will help to answer some questions, and then may raise other questions, but there were a lot of questions on the remote, on remote learning, and just to specify, there is remote learning within the hybrid plan when students would be actually learning remotely three days a week, and that's regardless of whatever option is chosen, and there's also the full remote learning school, which would be for students and parents who decide that they do not want to send their students back to school in hybrid mode, and those students would be part of our remote learning school, which we'll talk a little bit more about this evening. And then we are going to, I'm just going to do a brief overview of the options that were, that have been presented, I'm not going to go into detail, that detail's already been provided, but I just want to kind of remind everybody what the options are, and then we will go into questions and answers with the public. The majority of the questions will be answers hopefully, or the comments back to the questions will be from Mr. Lee and myself, Central Office, there may be some that are specific to School Committee, but we will do the best we can to answer the questions that we can answer, and we will go from there, and those we can answer, we will make note of and put back into a future presentation or within the FAQs that are on the website, you can see the reopening plan website, BraintreeSchools.org/reopening. The other thing I just want to mention that we have a couple of upcoming question and answer sessions, the times will be announced, but on Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 19th, we'll do some teacher and staff sessions, and that more information will come out on that tomorrow, and then on Thursday, this Thursday, August 20th, we will do Q and A sessions with parents and guardians, we will schedule several sessions, and we'll try to schedule them as conveniently as possible, so that hopefully we can work around, or there are sessions that would be available that are outside or work within your, within your working day. So again, we'll, more information will come out on that tomorrow, specifically the times that we will be doing that. So, with that, I would just ask if maybe Mary Beth McGrath could start us off and just speak to kind of the overall working relationship, and kind of we can go into some slides on, on health and safety.
Is she muted?
Sorry, thank you, Dr. Hackett, and School Committee members for entertaining me this evening, I appreciate that. I do want to let you know that the School Department, and in particular the School Nursing Division, have had a longstanding relationship, we have worked together closely for the almost 21 years that I've worked with the Town of Braintree, and I know that we will continue to do so. I will tell you that your school nurses and the School Nurse Director, Jean El-Sali, have worked closely with us from a town perspective since March, in our contact tracing, in our contact tracing efforts around our response to COVID-19 here in Braintree as the town, and we in turn will also be working hand in hand in partnership with them on whatever plan is decided for the school reopening, and that is a relationship that we, as I've mentioned, have had, and we will continue to have, and I do want to applaud your school nurses, they are exceptional professionals, and have been instrumental in the positive response that we've had in the Town of Braintree with our very low numbers now, they have been instrumental in helping us get there, so I do want to send out a huge thank you to the school nurses, and always want to remind anyone within the school community that they are extremely valuable resource to you as they have been to us, so I would absolutely encourage that you reach out to them with any questions, because they are extremely well versed in COVID-19 and the response to that, so I just wanted to thank them. As mentioned by Dr. Hackett, there are protocols in place, and I know Mrs. El-Sali and her team have been working very, very hard over these last few months to take what the state guidelines have offered us, not only from a DPH response in general to COVID-19, but also into incorporating the school plans, the DESI plans around that, to bring forward protocols for students coming to school, for staff coming to school, for those that may be symptomatic coming to school, whatever fashion, when they're at school, when they're on the bus, against staff that may be symptomatic, etc. So, there are plans in place for what to do if certain things happen, and we will continue to do that. So, for example, if a student or a staff tests positive for COVID-19, what would the protocol be? The student or staff would certainly, they would have to go into quarantine until they received their test results back. Once they receive those test results back, they go into isolation, so they will isolate at home, away from family members, in the home environment, and then from there, any person that that, that individual was in close contact with would have to quarantine for 14 days. They are encouraged to receive testing four to five days out, and the testing is a means to help the School Department and us at a local level, local Health Department level, in just tracking and identifying and providing more information for COVID-19 and any of its spread in the school system. So, there are, there are protocols in place that we will be following, and that we have been following from a community level, so it's just a matter of also incorporating those into the school system.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath, greatly appreciate it.
And with that, Jean, there are a few slides here, just in terms of symptoms and what our standard response or the protocol would be for response, would you like to begin with this slide?
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I just wanted to be able to bring to you kind of the differences that we'll be seeing in school from a health perspective. This is going to be very important, no matter which plan that we choose, in keeping our school community safe, and it's going to take the collaboration of everyone to do this, especially our families, we'll be relying heavily on them to faithfully review the symptom checklist with your children prior to sending them to school every day. And here on this slide, you see, these are the symptoms that we'll be asking you to review, whether you're a staff, or whether you're, you're going to review this for your children. A fever of 100.4, chills or shaking chills, cough not due to another known source such as asthma, chronic lung disease, difficulty breathing or shortness of breath, new loss of taste or smell, sore throat, a new headache not associated with an underlying condition, if you're a migraine sufferer and you're aware that that's what your headache is caused by, muscle aches and body chills, nausea, vomiting, or diarrhea, fatigue when it's in combination with any of the other symptoms listed here, and nasal congestion or runny nose, not due to another known cause such as allergies, when in combination with the other symptoms. So this list of symptoms that we just saw can be anything, we, even the common cold has many of those symptoms, and because there's no definitive test or no definitive way to determine whether it's the common cold or COVID-19, when you have these symptoms, whether you're at home, or whether you're sent home from school, you can change the next slide. You will be asked to do the following things, you'll need to go have a COVID-19 PCR test done, the turnaround time at this point tends to be around five to seven days, there may be opportunities at some locations to get it done quicker, the school, the student or staff member will need to be quarantined at home until the test results come back. If the results are negative, and the person is feeling better, and they're fever free for 24 hours without fever reducing medicine, the student or staff member may come back to school. However, if that test is positive, then the student or staff member will have to be home in isolation for 10 days, and it says, it says here, until three days have passed without, without a fever, well now it's only if you haven't had a fever for 24 hours, you don't need to have an extra three days there, so you need to be in isolation, that was a change that, that DPH made in July. So when that happens, when we get a positive test, now that can be maybe five to seven days after we have sent someone home, when we get a positive test, at that point, we will start contact tracing, and what that means is, we've been notified from the Health Department that there was a positive case in the, in the schools, and we will help find out who the close contacts to the person who had the positive test were. So what does that mean? That means that we will look back who that person was, where they were, from the time symptoms started, to 48 hours before that, because we know for 48 hours before you come down with symptoms, you can potentially spread the virus, so we'll be looking at all those people who have been in contact with that person who came down with it. So, in the elementary school and the middle school, my understanding in the plans is that we, everybody will be cohorted into individual groups, and they will stay in those groups, so those people will be the ones that will be expected to go home and quarantine for 14 days. In the high school, where they switch classes, it may be several classes that will be asked to go home and quarantine for 14 days after somebody has been tested positive for COVID-19. So I can't stress enough, and we'll have more opportunities to speak about this, but we will need the help and collaboration from everybody in the school community in order to pull this off, and it would, a gradual, a gradual start will be the most helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean, thank you, Mary Beth, and feel free to step in if there's any point in time that we get on that topic again.
Dr. Hackett, can I jump in real quick, because Jean, I just want to jump in on what Jean had mentioned, so there are several different methods in which a person, if they have been tested for COVID, in which they would be notified of a positive case, they would directly be notified themselves, also what happens is that's entered into, it's uploaded into a state confidential communicable disease platform, and that's how we're notified at the local Health Department level. So, the community in which the individual lives, that Health Department would be notified of the test result, so it could come from their doctor, it could come from the local Health Department, so there are a number of different methods, so and Jean had mentioned that if the Health Department contacted the School Department to notify of a positive case, that is how it happens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, either from Mary Beth, or I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you want to add to that, from Mayor's Office, in terms of the school-town coordination?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would say that there's been a great relationship between our Braintree Public School Nurses and our Health Department, and that continues to happen, and I feel great confidence in their abilities, and I thank the Braintree Public School Nurses for all the help they've given us up to this date on contact tracing, I don't think we could have done it as well without them, and I think that they have a great plan in place, and I appreciate all the effort that they've put in to this display demonstration tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question?
By all means, Mr. Corse.
Just, just a clarification, Jean, and thank you, it's my understanding that the CDC lowered that temperature from 100.4 to 100, is that correct?
The guidance of those protocols, and that was taken from the DESI guidance that we got from DESI, so I will look into that specifically, but the DESI guidance that they gave, those were their list of symptoms and guidelines.
And, of course, if I might add, those may be the CDC guidelines, but we follow state Health Department guidelines.
Okay, thank you, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. Dr. Hackett, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with that, as promised, I wanted to invite and have Mr. Lee, Assistant Superintendent Lee, walk us through some sample remote schedules, so, Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. So, as we had discussed at our last meeting, the work on schedules, both in-person, in a hybrid setting, or remote, have been topics of work for quite some time, and the work will continue even after this particular meeting, as we continue to refine things getting prepared for the fall. There had been some questions at the last meeting about the amount of synchronous instruction in the, the remote days of a student's schedule, so what I hope to do tonight is kind of walk you through some of the specifics that we are currently considering as we approach the school year. And I'd like to start just a little bit in terms of some of our thinking and where it comes from, about the balance between asynchronous, meaning things that you can do on your own time, and doesn't necessarily have to be done in a specific moment, and synchronous instruction, where again, that is happening in real time, and requires people to be actively engaged at a particular point in time. So the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, which is the board that accred, gives the national certification to teachers, their recommendations on time for synchronous learning are listed here, and at the elementary level in a given day, their recommendation is two hours, and this is obviously to limit the amount of screen time that elementary aged children would be undertaking, but it also acknowledges really the good instruction that happens asynchronously, not only pre-pandemic, but even in the remote plans that we're developing moving forward. At the middle and the high school level, their recommendation is 3.5 hours per day is a maximum amount of time in synchronous learning, and I ask you to just consider those, those times as we kind of move through the schedules that you'll see. So, in terms of increasing synchronous instruction during remote days for elementary, we intend to approach this by having elementary classes be both in-person and remotely with the same teacher, and we can do this by bringing in the entire class, but using two separate rooms to separate them, using supervision from parents or other sources, and allowing the teacher to move back and forth between the two rooms, providing instruction during the day, and I'm going to get into greater detail in a moment. At the middle school, synchronous options would be available for every period, you know, the middle school, each level has its own unique challenges, so the solutions to each level are slightly different, and, you know, it is working within the context of the level that we find the best solutions to the problems that we have, so at the middle school, it will look different than the elementary school, and as a result, targeting English, math, support in general, and physical education, as the classes we want to teach while kids are in-person, that allows us to have synchronous options for the rest of the day, on every single day, and again, I'll get into greater detail shortly. And then Braintree High School, the intent would be to have the afternoon classes, and there are three in the morning, three in the afternoon, but the afternoon classes would be taught in a synchronous fashion, so that's just a broad overview of what you're going to hear a little bit more about in a second, next slide, please. So, I have a couple slides on the elementary program, it probably is the most complicated, if you will, in terms of how we approach it, so this is a day's sample for an elementary student who's home on a remote day, so as you can see, at 8:45, attendance and morning meeting in a lesson all begin in a synchronous fashion, and, you know, the morning meeting can include things that we discussed previously, such as community building, social emotional learning activities, a preview, a preview of the day, and things of the like, but you can see from 8:45 to 9:45, that is synchronous time with teachers. At 9:45, again, this student is at home, they would be assigned synchronous academics, and they would be working relatively independently during this work, also in there ideally grabbing a snack. Then at 10:30, they come back to a synchronous activity, using the specialist that elementary students, you know, receive as part of their instructional program, and that lasts approximately 30 minutes. At 11, they move back into an asynchronous academic period of time, working all the way to lunch, which is at 11:45. After, after lunch, from 12:30 to 1:45, they would also be in an asynchronous academic moment, but then they would go back into synchronous meetings in the afternoon, including sharing out and wrapping up the day, and as you can see, that's a little over an hour of time. So in this particular example, the elementary student would have received two hours and 35 minutes of synchronous instruction during this, this day, but we're going to move to the next slide just to clarify it a little bit further. So, this is in essence the exact same slide, but where you, at 9:45, we talk about asynchronous, you can begin to see some of the details that would emerge, and so that would be a reading and writing lessons, for instance, again, everything that we've been presenting, including tonight, are still working drafts that we continue to refine, but this is an example of the type of activity that they could be doing at 9:45. At 10:30, this particular student would have physical education in a synchronous fashion, being taught by the phys ed staff. At 11 o'clock, they'd move back into an asynchronous math program, the one that we've described several times now, DreamBox, which is interactive and adjusts to the learning abilities and, you know, where this, the student is comfortable with a particular mathematical concepts. 11:45 lunch, and then 12:30, although it's asynchronous, using Google Slides to work on a social studies project is something that they could be doing during such a time. At 1:45, again, you know, afternoon meeting where they can begin to wrap up the course of the day, this would also be an opportunity for a student that receives special education services to get some IEP support, and all those things can continue to work until 2:50 when the day ends. So that's a little bit of detail, again, it's not immense detail, but it does give you a flavor for what that student's day might look like. On the other hand, in terms of teachers, next slide, please, this gives you a sense of what that classroom teacher would be doing during the course of the remote day, so obviously from 8:45 to 9:45, that teacher is doing that synchronous work, including morning meeting, in, in this particular case, was going to present a phonics lesson. At 9:45, when the, the larger class is moved into an asynchronous activity, that teacher is available to do individual work with students, again, remotely. 10:30 would be their prep period, the opportunity for them to get prepared for the next day. At 11, that work continues in terms of collaborative preparation, we've talked a little bit about the filming of lessons to be shown to the students, it is very important, often, particularly in this environment, to be able to film something that students can review over and over, or as much as they might need to, to grasp the content that is important in that particular video, knowing that the teacher in person or remotely in a different type of activity would follow up on that material, providing clarity, answering questions, and making sure that students can assimilate the material. They get a lunch as well, but at 12:30, they would have a combination of office hours or reaching out to parents, that's, that's in essence synchronous work, but it's being done on a much smaller scale in terms of the students or families they might be interacting with. Again, very similar to a student's schedule, they bounce back into synchronous afternoon meetings, in this case, it may be a social emotional lesson that they're working on, and that rolls up to the end of the day. So, this, this does not obviously include the, the time that students are in school, this is a remote day, so, you know, as we talked about cohorting students, some whom would be in school and some who would be out of school, those examples are for a student who would not be in school on that particular day. Next slide, please. The middle school is, is different, it, you know, elementary schools and middle schools function differently on a number of different levels, so the, the schedule at the middle school obviously will look a little bit different as well, and so to give some highlights before we show you the actual schedule, you know, middle schools will prioritize English, math, support block in general, and PE is in-person classes, and you'll see why that's relevant as we move forward. In order to capture as much academic content areas as possible, we had previously discussed moving to a six-period schedule, this maintains a seven-period schedule. All classes have the ability to provide synchronous activities and support on any day and during any block, and cohorts would attend on Monday and Tuesday, or Thursday and Friday. We had talked a little bit about alternating days for a variety of reasons, which I'll get into in a second, we're moving back towards cohorting, so two days in a row, and then three days remote, or three days remote, two days in a row, and that's kind of the feeling that we, the, the setup that we think is probably most advantageous to everybody involved. And Wednesdays would now be the asynchronous academic class day, again, previously we had discussed Monday, as we had thought more about it, you know, for a number of reasons, not, not the least of which is aligning ourselves with some neighboring districts, as, as you all know, not all of our teachers live in town, and aligning our schedules somewhat closely to some surrounding communities makes a lot of sense in terms of people trying to arrange daycare and other family matters that they need to attend to. Next slide, please. So this, this would be an example of individual student's schedule at the middle school, you can see on Monday and Tuesday, they are in-person, those are the yellow blocks, and you can see, as I had described, the, the classes that would meet, so English, math, PE, and then resource, academic supports, so it, you know, this was a special education student, they could receive services in that block, if it was a student on a 504 who needed particular services, they could access them during this block, EL, typical guidance issues, this, this block helps those services be delivered in person. Then they go home in the afternoon, so in the afternoon, those classes are again being taught synchronously, so the, the teacher will have options in terms of how much synchronous instruction they would want to give during a period, for instance, of social studies at 1:30, but the, the teacher is available to all students during those blocks. On Wednesday, you can see the, the full remote day, this, you know, allows us to offer certain asynchronous instruction in the areas of English, PE and math, and again, resource and academic support, but also in social, social studies, science, and art as well. So that, that day is asynchronous, it allows some flexibility in terms of staff doing some collaborative work in some, in some other areas, and also being able to provide other supports to families and students as needed. For this particular student, on Thursday and Friday, those would be remote days for this, this student, and as you can see, the afternoon sessions that they got at the beginning of the week now become the morning sessions, that again, are being taught remotely, and they would have access to synchronous time during those blocks, and then the blocks that met in the morning on Monday and Tuesday now meet in the afternoon, but again, those are all remote, but yet, at the same time, synchronous instruction is available to them. So that, that's a, a brief overview of an individual middle school student, if I picked another student, those Monday and Tuesday blocks would be flipped with the Thursday and Friday blocks, as we cohort students and keep them separated in, in order to maintain the most safe environment possible. Next slide, please. High school schedule is a little bit different, but, you know, very similar to what we have talked about with the middle school program, we are now talking about cohorting students on a Monday and Tuesday schedule, or a Thursday-Friday schedule. Friday schedule. This allows that Wednesday asynchronous day. Again, it is helpful in that it aligns us with some other districts. It also provides a nice break during the week and an opportunity to do some even deeper cleaning on that particular day, as students would not be in school. But at the high school, we would increase the amount of synchronous instruction by making afternoon classes all synchronous. As I mentioned, there are three classes in the morning, but there are also three classes in the afternoon. So three out of every six periods a day, whether you're remote or in person, would be taught synchronously. Wednesday, again, would be the asynchronous academic lesson. Next slide, please. This is an example of a high school schedule. You can see the blocks, they rotate within the cohorted days. So Monday and Tuesday, you can see it goes from A, B, C, D, E, F to D, E, F, A, B, C. So what you can see in the blue shaded area is that this student got all of their classes in person on either Monday or Tuesday. Again, the afternoon classes would be synchronous, so that they would have access to teacher support during those periods as well. You can see the second cohort, which is in pink or mauve, on Thursday and Friday, they have a similar experience in the sense that they have all their academic periods in person, at least on one of those two days. But then again, they also have remote access and synchronous access to their teachers in those afternoons. Again, Wednesday is a time that is asynchronous in terms of what students might be working on, but it's also an opportunity for the school to have advisories and clubs run, office hours for teachers, and some other remote courses such as PE. You know, there's prep time as well that teachers need to have, and some of that can be embedded in this particular day as well. So just in a broad overview, and knowing that many people have a lot of questions, which we can continue to answer, these are some really concrete examples of what the schedules look like, how we intend to maximize synchronous time with teachers, and the program as it currently exists for the elementary, the middle, and the high school levels, knowing that more work will continue and further refinement may be necessary as we move closer to the fall. Thank you, Dr. Becken.
Mr. Lee, I would just ask if you could clarify, because we are, as you know, getting questions some about fifth grade, are they following a middle school schedule, or would they be following an elementary schedule? Could you touch on that?
Right now, we'd be looking at the fifth grade following the middle school schedule. We have had some conversations about whether or not to break out Liberty and Highland students, but at this point, we are really looking at it as a middle school program, as we had always been preparing for East to take on the fifth grade coming from the other sending schools.
And I think if, in terms of if we were in, if this had been a regular year that we were going into, the fifth grade curriculum would have been paralleled more closely to the fifth grade curriculum at East. Is that correct?
That is correct. Although not exactly identical, the curriculum that we were prepared to deliver had thus not been an abnormal year, was going to be remarkably close to one another.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, again, I'm not going to go in depth on the options. You have, they are posted on our reopening website. You actually have the recorded video sessions of those presentations on there as well. And I would just remind everybody too, as we head into the public session or the session of questions and answers, again, that there will be the first round of teacher, staff, as well as parent guardian Zoom sessions, which would be basically just questions and answers. There'd be a few administrators on there, and we will just go back and forth and try to answer your questions as best we can. Please keep your questions coming through emails. We are, all emails that are being sent to either me directly, or to other administrators directly, and to school committee members as best we can if we are on them. We are putting into the frequently asked question document, so we really are trying to keep track of everything, and we appreciate your patience in terms of trying to respond. Hopefully, tonight will give you a little bit of answers, some of the answers to some of those questions. But again, like I said, I'm sure that it'll raise more. So I just want to make sure that we're clear. This question came up last time. All the options that are on the table tonight all include the following things. One, we maintain our six-feet physical distancing within our schools. Two, we are operating on a hybrid plan, as Mr. Lee just walked through those schedules, which is two days in-person learning, three days remote learning per week. We are starting at a half-day. You know, when we talked about the plans earlier, we also had included some transitional points where we would look to see if we could bring, at Plan A specifically, we could bring more grade levels in as we look at Plan A, and also Plan B, either iteration of that plan. Some of the conversations or the transition points would be discussions around, do we extend from a half-day to a full day on two days in person, or do we add another day at a half-day? And those are considerations that we will continue to evaluate in coordination with the health department and with our teachers and administrators as we move forward through the fall. But just, I want to emphasize that in any of these plans, transitioning to something more is the goal. I mean, if we think really to the end goal of someday being able to really return in full person, that's where we want to always try to be working toward, as long as we can do it in a safe and efficient way. All these plans also include expanded in-person learning for special education students and those receiving specialized services. We talked about that. We also have some of that information in the FAQs. We'll continue to detail that out as we go. We did discuss that at the last meeting in terms of what the schedules look like for special education. So if you haven't had a chance to see those slides, it would be worth it for you to check out our website for those. That could also mean that we, for example, might have some of our programs, and students might be in for more than this, the two days in-person learning, or we may be extending the day for services within the two days that students are in for in-person learning. To the extent that we can, we're going to try to avoid providing any kind of services to students who need services by pulling them out of their general education classrooms. We want them to be in the classrooms when we have, particularly when we have the in-person days. And you've already heard, obviously, the synchronous and asynchronous learning with the daily schedules. That's been, that is part of all of these plans. Mr. Lee reviewed some of those and where we are. And again, that's a status update. We will continue to work on those, and those are samples. I hope that those of you who watched the last meeting can see that there's been a fairly significant shift in those as well, so we will continue to work on those over the coming weeks. All of our options include attendance requirements and grading. The department will be collecting all information on attendance from us. It will be, for all intents and purposes, a normal year in terms of those kinds of reporting. And I had a student email me, a high school student, asking specifically about, are we going to be getting grades? Because they are going to be a junior, and the answer to that is yes. They will be issued grades, and we will be ready into the normal transcript process for high school students. And I just want to remind everyone once again that one of the options, not embedded in the ones we're discussing tonight, but as parents, have the parents have the choice of a full remote option. So if parents are uncomfortable, or they don't want to send their students for medical reasons, or whatever the case may be, we are, we will be operating what we're calling a BPS remote learning school. We'll continue to build that out. Some of what you saw this evening with the remote days will be part of that, or it will look somewhat familiar to that. And we're also exploring some other options as well, but we will continue to work on that and get more information in the coming days and weeks. So all options also include food service. With the half-days right now, we would be in-person, would be grab-and-go lunches on the way out. We would have breakfast in the morning. There'd be snacks throughout the day. We'll have more information on this as well, and we will continue our grab-and-go meal service for all remote learners. And then we are still exploring some possible childcare options. Just to emphasize, this is not provided by the school, this would not be provided by the school department. These services would be on a contracted basis. They would be fee-based with a private vendor in options A and B1, because those options would provide, or we would have schools that would not be occupied to start. We would be offering in-school before and after-school care, as well as full-day care for the remote days. And option B2, because we will be occupying our schools, we would still be able to provide in-school before and after-school care, which also means potentially, hopefully, we would be able to have students go into that childcare program at the half-day point. So it would essentially be a full day of care for those students. So again, we do not have anything guaranteed at this time. We are exploring it. We are working hard at it. We understand and appreciate the fact that for parents, you know, this is a difficult situation all around, and certainly difficult for all of us, but we also want to try to provide as many options for you in support of you as we can. Option A, just again, these are just high-level overviews, and you can go see more detail in the prior meeting, the prior slide deck, as well as the recorded meeting. Pre-K would remain at the high school. We are in, option A is a pre-K through three hybrid return, and four through twelve, grades four through twelve would be in full remote. We would look to phase in the grade levels over time, grades four through twelve, as conditions would allow. Pre-K, already at the high school, it would remain there. We would house our half-day kindergarten sessions also at the high school. And again, I just want to emphasize, the hybrid, even in this model, is still two days in person, three days remote, and it's a half-day. We would then also locate grades one through three at East Middle School, and then grades four through twelve would start remote. And once again, we would be phasing those grade levels into the hybrid model. So that is a high-level, just bulleted-out overview, just as a reminder of what option A included. Option B, or B1, would be, again, this would be a pre-K through twelve hybrid start. So all grade levels would be coming back in a hybrid model. Kindergarten students would then attend inadequate for their half-day sessions. We would likely have to do, use the classrooms for morning and afternoon with cleaning in between. So for parents who are out there with kindergarten students, we will be working on this in terms of what session your child would be, and whether it be morning or afternoon. We would still locate pre-K at the high school, and those are their normal homeschool placements. Kindergarten sessions, there may be a need to locate some of those in some of the homeschools, depending on space and what the final numbers look like. We're still receiving registrations as we speak. Grades one through three would be in-person instruction cohorted by homeschools. So when they are in-person, we would use the three schools for grades one through three. Flaherty, Liberty, and Morrison. Flaherty and Ross students would attend Flaherty. Liberty would be housing Liberty and Highland students, grades one through three. And then Hollis and Morrison students would be attending the Morrison School, grades one through three. Our specialized programs would be located within those buildings, more than likely. That would still be details that would need to be worked out. All students in grades four through five would begin and start at South Middle School, and then all students district-wide, grades six through eight would attend East Middle School, with of course, grades nine through twelve attending the high school. So again, this is a full return, pre-K through twelve hybrid start. The only difference is that we would be consolidating schools at the elementary level, and would be utilizing South Middle School for grades four and five, and then East Middle School would have all grades students in grades six through eight district-wide. And then finally, option B2 is also a pre-K through twelve hybrid start. All students in this, in this option would be starting and attending their neighborhood schools. So once again, inadequate would be half-day kindergarten sessions that would be at MSKC, with the possibility that there might be a few sections at some homeschools based on numbers. The elementary schools, Liberty and Highlands would maintain the configuration that they would have started this year in, so grades one through five would be attending Liberty and Highland Schools. And Flaherty, Hollis, Morrison, and Ross would be attending their respective schools, grades one through four. We are still, again, at six-foot social distancing, going back to what all these have in common. And we are also, again, within a hybrid model, so two days in person and three days remote, and these are half-days. Middle schools, East would continue as it were going to be a regular year, in quotations, grades five through eight from Flaherty, Hollis, Morrison, and Ross would be going to East as it was, as planned, and East would be housing grades six through eight from those schools as well. South would then have grades six through eight from Liberty and Highlands, as it would have if we were in a regular situation. And then, of course, Braintree High School would have grades nine through twelve. So that is an overview of the three options. Again, just option A, again, pre-K through three hybrid, four through twelve starts remote, with phased in over the period of the fall. One through three would be East Middle School, and four, twelve, remote. B1, pre-K through twelve hybrid start, and we would utilize Flaherty, Liberty, and Morrison as consolidated grade one through three schools. And then we would have grades four and five attending South Middle School, and then all students six through eight at East, and then nine, twelve at the high school. And then, option B2, pre-K through twelve in a hybrid start, all students would be attending their neighborhood schools. And then you can see the breakout with inadequate. Everybody would be starting where they would have started, had we started this year in a normal fashion. Elementary schools, grades one through five at Liberty and Highlands as planned. Flaherty, Hollis, Morrison, and Ross, grades one through four as planned. And then the middle schools would also be configured as they would have been if we were in a regular startup. And then Braintree High School would have grades nine through twelve. So with that, I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want to take questions from the committee or how you want to start.
I think it's, there again, this is public hearing. I mean, there'll be space for question and answer with the school committee later on in our regular meeting. What do you say? We let the people speak?
Okay. So to start, Karen Carey.
Ms. Carey, good evening.
Hi. Hi, how are you?
Very well.
Thank you for the slides and clarifying a lot of this information. I do have a couple of questions that, I'm not sure if I heard it incorrectly, but for elementary, I believe he said something about the teacher jumping between two classes and the cohorts going on the same day. Is that correct?
Mr. Lee?
Sorry, I had it on mute. It's partially correct. So the intent would be for, if Ms. Carey, you were the classroom teacher, all of your students would come to school on a particular day, and they would be separated into two rooms, allowing for us to maintain a six-foot distance. And using a para to supervise the group that the teacher was not with, the teacher would have access to both groups of students to provide lessons, instruction, and support to both groups during the course of that day. So that, that particular class in and of itself becomes a cohort. Does that make sense, or does that clarify it for you?
So say the class was originally twenty kids. Ten would be in one, ten would be in the other.
Correct.
And so the teacher would be teaching a lesson to one while the para is assisting the other ten?
Right. So in a given lesson, particularly at the elementary school, it's not an hour of the teacher talking at a group of students. It's the teacher giving little mini-bits of information and materials and lessons, and then students working either independently or in small groups with the material. So it would work very similarly, that the para would assist the students in the second room with support on the work that they might be doing, but the teacher would move between both groups, providing mini-lessons, support, and instruction to all twenty kids during the overall course of the period.
Okay. And then I have some questions on middle school as well. So in your example, you had different classes that were the same for Monday and Tuesday. Would those rotate so that the following week, the kids would have different classes, or are they always going to have those same classes in person?
They would always have those same classes in person. You know, obviously, part of it is prioritizing English and math, but it's also prioritizing support services for students that can best be delivered while students are in person. So those four periods that I identified, English, math, support, and physical education, would be the classes being taught in person.
Oh. So what if your child is not on an IEP and does not need support? What do they get instead?
Well, everybody needs support. So it can be guidance, it can be other activities around SEL or academic support being provided to students in different formats. So there are a lot of different ways that students are supported in a middle school. And that period provides the opportunity for those services to be provided regardless of what they might look like for an individual student.
Okay. So in that one period, is it going to be, are they going to be taught by a teacher? Will that be some sort of synchronous teaching? Does that count towards the hours that you have indicated that we would have each year, each day?
Well, if you look at the middle school model, it would far exceed the 3.5 that's being recommended for middle school-age students. So every single period...
Yeah, but that includes gym. That includes gym. That doesn't include, like, major subjects.
Well, the synchronous instruction involves all the subjects, whether it's social studies or science. You know, the synchronous instruction and support can be provided through Google Meets as well. You know, that's not the same as in-person, and I'm not suggesting it is, but it is synchronous, meaning that the teacher would be available during that actual period to provide support and teaching to all students.
Okay. I guess I still just don't understand what my student will be doing during that recess, that resource academic support. Would that be like... Like, would that be like a silent reading, or?
It can include that. It could include receiving direct support from, you know, different teachers as they need it. Again, there are a lot of different ways that students are supported in the middle school. It could, again, it could involve guidance. It could involve school adjustment counselors, school psychologists. There are a variety of resources that come to bear.
Okay, so here's another question. I mean, so I believe the majority of the students don't require resources. So wouldn't it make more sense to have a major subject in that timeframe and have the resource piece be something that could be done remotely with a specialist, or a para, or, you know, a teacher at that time, and give these other kids that actually really need to be in class with a teacher for a major subject? Wouldn't it make more sense to have that flip-flopped?
There are quite, quite many students require support in a variety of different ways. And given the fact that in the other periods, the other major subjects, the teacher would be available to them in synchronous time using Google Meets, that was kind of the trade-off that we made. It was an attempt to make sure that we got as much synchronous time for all students as possible. And this is one model that we were working on that seemed to provide that, and a really great way to provide the support that so many students need during the course of the day.
Ms. Carey, I'm just going to interrupt for just a second. We do have a lot of people online, and we have a lot of hands up. So respectfully, I'm going to ask if you could, I've made some notes. You have questions about resources, and what can happen during the academic support for students who are not receiving any kind of special services. I've made that note, and maybe as we go further, some of those questions might get answered a little bit more. But I'm just going to, I'm going to go on to the next person. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jamie Gravis.
Hi, thank you. I didn't expect to be called that quickly. Actually, I just have a quick question, and apologies if you mentioned it already. But I saw that for the middle school students, there would be two days right next to each other in person, with the rest of the three days in the week being remote. Will that also be true for elementary students? Will they go two days in a row? And will it most likely be either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday?
That is the intention, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have a concerned citizen of Braintree address. I would ask that you just identify who you are, please.
Hi, my name's Christine. I'm not a parent of students in the schools right now, but my kids have gone through Braintree Schools. And I just have a question about this Braintree Remote Learning School. You've mentioned it a couple of times. You've said that you're going to be giving more information. But my concern, and I say this as a teacher, I don't teach in the Braintree Schools, but as somebody who would be also maybe working with some of the students as support, what does that look like? Because if you have a group of families that decide that they don't want to have their students step in the schools and step out of the schools in those cohorts, I think that there's a fair amount of people, both at the elementary and middle school level, just from people I've talked to, and possibly from the high school, who are concerned that you're sending those students out to not be working with Braintree teachers. So can you speak to that?
I can speak to it only as much as what we've already really covered. That option itself will continue to be worked on. I mean, part of this is to see where we end with the number of students who are coming back, where they come back, going through our staffing process. Obviously, a lot is going to depend on which plan is selected this evening. We look to, we are looking to have as many options as possible. But we will, we will continue to fill that out, to make sure that parents have a very good idea from a structural standpoint, what it looks like. The goal is to, is to staff it with our own teachers and staff, and it will have, obviously, the, both the synchronous and asynchronous components that you, we just discussed within the remote day of students who are in the hybrid model. So, thank you. Louis Cruz. Mr. Cruz?
Hello.
Hi.
Oh, wonderful. So she actually asked a huge question I was planning to ask, but just to clarify that I understand your answer. On the slide we're currently on, one elementary student's remote day is a potential plan for a fully-remote student. Is that correct?
That would be correct, except that we could do that. And, you know, again, we will continue to work through this, and we'll have more information as we go.
Exactly what is the timeline for that more information?
As soon as possible. So tonight is a big night, obviously. The school committee will be deciding which plan we will be going with. We've already done a lot of pre-planning that touches every one of the plans, so we are not flat-footed. The next step for us is to, to make sure we have the student commitments to what they're planning to do. And then we go through the staffing assignments, and then we will continue to work through both the remote portion of the hybrid student stay as well as any students who are looking to go into full remote.
All right, and I would just end with basically a brief comment. Just looking at these three plans, and what the state has done, and why we've been so successful keeping our COVID numbers low, we, as a state, decided that we're going to keep things locked down and open things in a very phased way. And there is only one plan on the table that matches that. Option A, obviously, the phased opening. We've all heard the mantra for quite some time now, "coming together by staying apart." I'm not sure why we, as a town, would suddenly decide to come apart by staying together with options B1 or B2. So I'm really hoping the school committee takes all that in consideration, that option A, if you look at what we've done in the state, that is the plan that closely mirrors that and provides us as safe a possible atmosphere for reopening things and not ending up like Georgia, where one day after opening, you're sending home letters saying, hey, a second grader has COVID. Hey, we've got to lock down three schools, three high schools. Hey, so sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Shal?
Hi. Am I unmuted? Hi.
Yes, why?
Thank you. I really wanted to just get on here and thank you guys for having options, which I think are really great. But one of my questions are, I'm trying to figure out the phased part of it. Is there like a timeline for when the phased part of it you think might happen? Or is there not one? And then also, I wanted to find out, is there some extra support for children that are in the middle school age group? Because like myself, I work away from the home, so my son would be learning at home by himself.
Sure, thank you for your questions. I'm going to have Mr. Lee answer your last question first, and then I'll come back to your first question.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. As I described in the presentation around the middle school schedule, one of the benefits of it is that every single period of the day, there is the opportunity for teachers to engage students in a synchronous manner. So even if you can't be there directly to work with your child, assuming your child's online in the class, that the teacher would be available during that period to provide assistance or instruction, given that particular plan for the middle school.
And just to follow up, I would say, this kind of goes back to the previous caller's point, or that all of these options are phased. The difference is in option one, we are bringing a smaller range of students in-person to start. But even in option one, we are ramping up and bringing, and over the course of time, based on certain conditions, and which we will be specifying as we go through this process in coordination with the health department. Depending, options, all, both options in B, both of options B are also phased. So we did not work out a phasing plan for the question of, for example, do we go from two half-days to two full-days? Or do we add-
Doctor, I'm having a hard time hearing you with the mask on, I guess. Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, sorry about that. Let me, just real quickly, all the options are phased. So while we did not spell out the phasing on B, both of those iterations, what the phasing would look like would be, as we go through the fall, we would continue to monitor how we're doing, how we're managing. We would continue to work with local health officials. And then the questions in a phasing with the options in B would be, do we go from two half-days to two full-days with three remote? Or do we add an additional full day? So those are the questions in the phasing that would take place in both of those options as well. So, thank you. Sandy Roffey?
Hi. First, I want to thank you all for the work that you've done. I know it's, this is a different year. Everything's different. But I had a concern about, you know, when you're looking at A, B1, and B2, and I just wanted to give this input as a parent of both a senior and an elementary student. When you're talking about the quarantine, you know, if someone comes down with symptoms and they're quarantined for X number of days, but they have their test and they don't find out for five to seven days, and you have seniors moving from class to class, my concern is that they don't find out for five to seven days. And then we say, if they're positive to everyone, okay, you were exposed, you were exposed, you were exposed. But now they've had five to seven days to expose X more number of children. So I just wanted to put that out into somebody's head, you know, into the school committee's head, while they're thinking about which option might be best for them. And then, just secondly, I wanted to reiterate what someone else had said about, you know, I think it's important for people who are considering full remote to kind of have an idea of who's doing that teaching. That's all. I just wanted to say that. And again, thank you for all of the work that you've done. I just, I, as a parent of two children in the system, you know, I'm raising my hand for option A. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you for your questions, Ms. Roffey. Mr. Lee, do you want to just touch on the cohorting at the high school?
Well, it was mentioned earlier by, I believe, Mr. Abzali. Cohorting at the high school is more difficult than it is at the middle or the elementary level, just given the disparate program that all students can take at the high school. And as was mentioned, a positive test could result in students being quarantined from multiple classrooms. So it is obviously something we need to keep our eye on. We have been in, working with both Mr. Abzali and Mary Beth McGrath, looking at other ways that we could expedite some of the testing. But that is certainly a concern that we share as well.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, Jim Ross?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Jim stepped away. It's Patty. I don't know, I guess if people are putting it out there, I'd love B2. My son's at the high school, you know, having everybody be able to go back to school is super important to me. My questions are, if D E guidelines are three-feet distancing with masks, why are we adhering to six?
So, the, we have been planning since the beginning of this exercise in coordination with Mary Beth McGrath, who we heard earlier, mayor's office, with a six-foot social, physical distancing. You know, part of it is trying to plan for, in a plan in a way that allows for an abundance of caution. As we move forward and we see some potentially, we see some management, virus management change. We might have, for example, the testing might be more readily available, quicker turnaround. As we manage the virus, we will continue to evaluate all aspects of the plan that we're implementing. You know, candidly, if you look around, the majority of school systems in the Commonwealth are planning on six feet of physical distancing. And part of that is because, when we think about the lower elementary, in particular, six feet becomes three and a half inches pretty quickly with students who are in pre-K or kindergarten. So we want to make sure that we are, again, planning with an abundance of caution, and we will continue to monitor that. And if there are opportunities that present themselves in coordination with the Department of Health, Town Department, we would, we would look to reconsider those things, but that's how we wanted to start.
Okay, fair enough. Second question, why just a half a day in person, for the in-person days when the kids are there? If they're bothering to be there, is there a reason they can't stay for the full day? Or is it just starting as a first phase, half a day?
What you just said. So again, really kind of the same answer to the question you asked before about physical distancing. We just want to make sure that as we go into this, we give ourselves every opportunity for success. And then, you know, we can loosen up as we go, if all indications are that we can take those kinds of steps.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jay Linkler? I'm sorry, Linker.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, so I first want to say I do appreciate all the additional detail that was offered tonight with the schedules and the teaching. I do have a question, though, again, about the folks that are going to possibly choose the full-remote model and how that's going to work. I'm assuming that at some point, fairly soon, you're going to be asking for parents to make a decision on which they want. And I think, Dr. Hackett, you said that you'd be able to offer more details on remote learning once you knew exactly how many people are choosing which option. However, it's kind of hard to make a choice on what you want to do without knowing exactly what the full-remote learning option is going to look like. So I'm wondering if you have a timeline on when that might come out and when you're going to be asking for parents to make a choice on what they're going to do.
Completely understood. Thank you for your point. And we do know that we have to give you a much better sense, parents a much better sense of what the full-remote learning would look like. So we will time up our request of what parents want to do and what program their students to be in, with our ability to be able to really better spell out what the full-remote plan would look like. So I appreciate your comment, and that's what we look to do. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick second question? Just, you know, regarding quarantining, and obviously, as we know, we get into the fall, kids are going to get sick with just flu or run-of-the-mill colds that are going to have symptoms similar, you know, to COVID. With the backlog as it exists today with testing, to the earlier person's question, if quarantines aren't going to happen until a positive test result comes back, that could possibly leave a large window of time where it could be spreading before we know that someone had it? Has there been any thought to possibly doing any isolation or quarantining if someone has COVID-like symptoms, even before they get a positive test result back?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I would say that, well, first of all, the guidelines are, if someone is feeling sick, they are not supposed to come to school. But as far as if someone is in direct contact with a positive, those individuals will be quarantined for 14 days. So there is a system in place to quarantine anyone that's exposed to a person with COVID. But if someone is experiencing any type of symptoms, and we have a list of the different symptoms, and at that point, they should not be going to school with symptoms. In general, if someone is feeling sick, and I'm sure, whenever you go to, you know, many businesses you go to today, you know, the protocols are there, they ask you all the questions, et cetera. So that's, that's how we resolve that, is that, you know, if a student is not feeling well and has any symptoms, they would not be going to school. If a student is positive and test-positive, the contact tracing would take place. And anyone that was in close proximity and within contact with that individual, they would be quarantined for 14 days. And that's how we have dealt with the virus here at Town Hall, how we've dealt with it throughout the community, even during the peaks. So there is a process. And, you know, the most important thing is if a child is feeling ill, not to send them to school.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Doctor, I wonder how many people have actually looked at the frequently asked questions on our website? I've been perusing it all day, and you've got like 20 questions that deal with remote learning that might get people closer to that. I'm wondering if we're seeing people actually, shall we say, access that information?
Those were just posted today.
Okay, all right, well, then I guess we're going to make a more robust push towards letting people know that in the Braintree School website, we have a reopening plan that has frequently asked questions. One is the general link for general questions. The other one deals with specifically special education IEPs, I believe, and remote impersonally, learning, that link, as well as the school committee link. Please access those. I think they answer quite a few of the questions. That way you can get to a specific question that might be case-specific to your situation, so we can get closer to that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
By all means, Mr. Kukurus.
I think, and I may not have understood the questions correctly, I think what the parents have been asking is, if someone presents, and maybe this is for Gina, Mary Beth, if someone presents with those symptoms that were on the slide, and they come to school, it's my understanding we're sending them home, and they're going to be tested, and they're not going to be back in school until we get those results. They're not going to be in- school for the five days that we're waiting for the results. Is that correct?
So we do have, uh, both Jean, uh, and Mary Beth on board. Uh, Mary Beth, do you want to start? And then Jean, with any follow-up?
Sure. That is correct, Mr. Kukoris. So the child, when they, they would likely be going to the nurse for, uh, an evaluation. And if the nurse determines that they need to be sent home, the parent will be immediately contacted. That child would be placed into the isolation room until the parent comes to pick them up and the child will stay out until they, they, they will have to be tested. So they'll be in quarantine and then dependent upon the results that are received back, that would determine in which direction the case would go, either isolation or continued quarantine if there are any symptoms or a negative test result.
Jean, do you have anything to follow up on that?
Yes, I just want to reiterate that that is exactly what we would do. However, people can spread the virus up to 48 hours prior to the start of symptoms. So even though we've sent somebody home or somebody's called in from the outside that then said that they're not coming into school today because they're sick and have one of these symptoms, they potentially could have spread the virus the day before and the day before that while they were at school.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, I may need help pronouncing your name, but, um, Harina?
Hi, Helen.
Yes, good evening.
Hi, thank you so much. Yes, you said the name correctly. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you everyone. I know this has been really hard. So I want to thank you all for answering all the questions. Um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, the first one, just to continue on the quarantine portion. If, if one of the siblings is quarantining because someone in the class tested positive, will the other sibling or the whole family have to quarantine as well?
I would start with, uh, Ms. McGrath.
That's a possibility. We, we would definitely be involved in doing some case investigation and contact tracing to see if that's a requirement. But there's a, there's a very good probability that that could be the case. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, I have, uh, one of my daughter going to kindergarten, the other one in fourth grade. Uh, I think my understanding was that you're, you're trying to keep the siblings, uh, going to school in person on the same day. Um, how would that work if both my kids will be in different locations in different schools?
So we certainly recognize that we have that, those situations are, uh, we do have a fairly powerful student information system, um, as well as transportation software. Uh, we will be at out and looking through those situations. We also know we have students who don't necessarily have the, who are from the same family without the same last name. So to the, to the extent that we can, um, we are going to really try to make sure that we keep children within families within the same schedule. Uh, there may be obviously situations where we can't do that, but that's our intent.
Okay. And then one last question, I promise. This is the last one. So for kindergarten, I think the elementary schedule that you shared, um, I'm assuming it's not for kindergarten because kindergarten will be only half a day. So therefore till 12. Uh, with the kindergarten, will they take attendance every day? Um, and then how often will they have to be with teacher? Cause being the fact that they're small, we as parents need to stay next to them to make sure that they are staying and, you know, and listening. Um, we are planning of, of, um, doing private daycare for the other two or three days. Um, so how would that work for kindergarten? Will you, will they take attendance every day?
So attendance will be taken as it is during the course of a normal school year. We certainly recognize that, um, you know, it, it, from a developmental standpoint, uh, as we look at pre K kindergarten, even grade one and grade two, and I think Mr. Lee touched on this earlier in terms of, you know, how much screen time, how much parent support is needed for students. Uh, we are sensitive to all of those, uh, questions and considerations. Uh, and people who are much better versed in kindergarten curriculum planning will be, uh, taking that on. But we, um, just make the general point that, um, these schedules, again, are sample and we recognize that we're going to have to make some, um, you know, changes and, and adapt to the developmental needs of our learners.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. William Valenza, I might need help with that pronunciation.
Oh, Valenzuela, thank you.
Sorry.
No worries. Quick question. So for grade seven through 12, still no transportation service at all?
So I am really glad you asked that question. Um, I wanted to clarify that from the power, uh, the slides at the last presentation, our first step is to make sure that we are in compliance with state law, uh, around transportation guidelines. So for example, um, we are required to pick up students who are, live more than two miles away from their homeschool at the elementary level, uh, which would be inclusive of, um, grade, uh, five, six. Uh, and at the secondary level, we're not required to provide any transportation. That is not where we want to be. Um, but our first sweep at this needs to be to make sure we're in compliance with state law. And obviously the, the decision the school committee makes later tonight will allow us to move forward in our, in our, uh, planning and our rooting. Um, and each one of these options has a different set of challenges. But I just want to make sure that everyone understood, stands that, uh, it is our intention to do everything we can to transport students who, uh, who need it. I think we can get there, but, um, our first sweep has to be compliance with state law.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie McLaughlin?
Hi, this is actually Michael. Sorry.
No worries.
Um, just a clarification. So the two days the high school kids are home in the morning of the remote day, is that synchronous or asynchronous?
Mr. Lee?
Uh, the days that they are home in the morning, um, they, that would be asynchronous instruction. It's the afternoon that's synchronous or obviously the in-person side of it.
And for the asynchronous, whatever that turns out to be, will they be held accountable for, um, that time or whatever that is? Is there any checkpoints in that they're, they're doing stuff? I just, I think at that age group, the more that, uh, that they have to do, the better.
Agreed. Uh, and the answer to your question is yes, uh, they will be held accountable. Uh, there'll be a form of attendance taken, whether that, uh, includes a submission of material that was supposed to be done during that period or an actual physical check-in, not a physical check-in, but a, a remote check-in. Um, but yes, very different month from the spring, they will be held accountable for that time.
So just, just, I know, just one last question. I saw that on the asynchronous mornings when they're remote, there will be some, at least some level of check-in and, um, attendance?
There will be some level of attendance and check-in, but again, it, that can take the form of, of a remote check-in or, or remote attendance from the perspective that submitting material that was due during that period takes the form of attendance in certain cases. So yes, they will be held accountable for the time. Yes, they will be held accountable for doing the work that, that was assigned during that period, uh, and that those will obviously impact their grades as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just a little bit of a pre-warning. I'm going to call on Kyle Fredericks now. Kyle is the president of the Braintree Educators Association. Um, and I just have to find him on this list here. Of course, I had him a second ago. You got it?
Frank, can you hear me?
We can. Just trying to, thank you.
I appreciate the introduction with the word warning. Sounds very appropriate. That said, I, um,
Not intentional.
No, no, it's, uh, it's, it's all good. Um, I mean, it's, I've asked so many questions over the few weeks. This is more of a statement and I, again, appreciate the introduction. I, I first wanted to say, um, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee, Dr. Hackett, Mr. Lee, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I know that you've been working extremely hard this summer and none of these questions or these answers come easy. And I think that's appreciated by a good, great many people, um, including everybody as part of our organization. Um, last meeting for school committee, uh, during public comments, somebody's asked the question, how does staff feel? I, I think I want to try to answer that now. I think it was an important question. Um, we just asked our staff, about half of the staff is all in for a full remote plan, which I know is not a plan tonight. The other half is all in for a hybrid plan. Um, I'm not here to advocate for either one. There is a great many differences in the way our members think on that. That said, we did ask how many of our members feel safe? And a vast majority of them said they do not feel safe going back into buildings. And I think that's really relevant to the vote tonight, which is what I want to speak to. Um, we're not talking a hundred or 200. We're talking four to 500 staff members that feel that way. And I, I just want to expand upon why they, part of the reasons why they feel that way. So why do staff members feel unsafe? I, I think tonight's a great example. There was so much information given in this presentation, so professionally well done, yet there are literally hundreds of questions that even after the summer and tonight still are unanswered. And that is really making staff members feel insecure. We've worked collaboratively all summer and to not have so many questions answered, um, people are really struggling with that. It wasn't long ago that we were told that Plan A, what would support this problem? With Plan A that you're voting on tonight for or against, um, such a, a relatively small percentage of students would come back immediately. Two buildings will be concentrated for instruction and that would allow more time to answer so many of those questions. It would give the district some space to answer questions and that's really valued because suddenly with the introduction of Plan B one and B two, that's just not the case. Suddenly, i- in both of those examples, everybody's coming back. So either these questions have become less important or we're going to try to answer them. Whereas before we said a month and a half, now they're trying to be answered in about three weeks. And people are really worried that we're going to rush through those. We're going to make mistakes. Um, and, and that's why people are feeling unsafe. A second reason why people are feeling unsafe is it's not just the unanswered questions. People fear what they don't know, but they fear something even worse. They fear, uh, not knowing what they don't know. All the unexpected things and obstacles that will come up that we just didn't think about. As a hybrid plan would land in September, there are going to be so many obstacles that we're going to encounter in real time that we're not necessarily prepared for. And once again, we were told that Plan A was part of the solution as we were working over the summer. Plan A would allow a small percentage of the district to be getting direction instruction and we would be isolated to two schools. And what would happen when we met all of these unexpected problems and obstacles is we could concentrate all of the resources of the district, all of the administrators, transportation, custodians, nurses, technology, all in this isolated group and to, so that we can meet these unexpected challenges in a very efficient and effective manner. But under plans B one and B two, we're now going to spread everybody out immediately, all of those resources. And the problem with that is we also will not, I know you mentioned phases and those other plans. The phases are, are much smaller and, and certainly in a different context. Basically, we, um, what, what we're allowed to do, um, when we have, when we're isolated to two buildings is we have an assessment period where we can learn from that first month. We can learn the mistakes that we will make. We can learn from our time with hybrid and apply everything that we learn to all the other phases that would come back. We would have a reflection period. In education, we value assessment and reflection so much. Yet in this, if we don't pick option A, we essentially eliminate the reflection phase and assessment drastically changing it. I think that's why people feel unsafe. Another reason why people feel unsafe, um, we've spoken to so many nurses and they are absolutely the first line of defense in this, with these medical challenges, this medical crisis, this pandemic. They are facing not only every single normal challenge that they would have, every problem that students have, but they are now going to be facing all the challenges related to COVID. And once again, we were told that Plan A would help with this. We would isolate to two buildings and most importantly, all the nurses would come together to work through September, that first phase, um, to take on those unexpected challenges. When those formidable challenges come about, as a team, they could take them on, learn from those, those situations and bring them back to their home schools at the proper phase. Under Plan B one and B two, they, again, they're, they're going to be divided up amongst the, the whole district. No reflection period, no assessment period. They won't be all together to take on all of these challenges. I think people are feeling very unsafe about that. The spread of COVID is directly related to cleaning protocols. There's so many cleaning protocols that are recommended. The custodians, I mean, how will the bathrooms be cleaned? How often? How will classrooms be cleaned? By who? High touchy areas? People are really, really scared about how can the cleaning take place? Custodians were working every minute of their day previously. Now with all of these concerns, if everybody is spread out across their buildings, how can they possibly take on these new responsibilities? People are, under Plan A, we were so supportive, we would be isolated at first to two buildings. The whole custodial staff would be focused on those two buildings. All of those expected and unexpected challenges would be able to be taken on by those custodians. They could learn the, any mistakes that occurred, learn from them, take them back to their home schools. And again, I can't help but emphasizing that Plan A and that phased approach just seems so much safer. Plan B, um, kind of finally, why, why, what I would like to communicate about why people feel so unsafe, our buildings are so old. Our HVAC systems have been limping along for the longest time. Air quality is questionable and people are so concerned. Plan A was introduced as a way to take our two best buildings, our buildings with, that are the newest and have the most open spaces, the most grounds outside, to basically mitigate the problems that we anticipate with our HVAC systems. By delaying the other buildings, it gave us time to evaluate those HVAC systems, assess for airflow and air quality, analyze those reports, um, figure out what place, what instructional areas need to be offline and which ones can be mitigated. Suddenly, under B one and B two, what we needed a month and a half to do is now being told, well, we're going to get that done in three weeks. I haven't seen a report yet. I know this is complicated. I just am not confident that all of this will happen in three weeks. There's nothing scarier when staff members by the hundreds and students cannot trust the air that they're breathing. And we're just very concerned about that. In closing, I mean, there's so much to talk about and I know I've taken a lot of time already. Um, we understand that there has to be a certain level of risk tolerance. There is, there's never going to be a situation where everything is 100% safe in every context. And I, and I think people understand that and get it. But out of all the interests that exist here, I just, we feel very important that the interest that has to trump all the other interest is safety. It can't be political. We can't be rushing this. We have to do this safely. And I implore the school committee tonight with your vote, um, to take, to make sure we're prioritizing safety and not rushing this. I know we can get to a place where all staff, all teachers, everyone wants to be back. Nobody wants to be isolated to their homes, but we have to figure out a way to do it safely. Whether that's a full remote plan or a hybrid plan, I ju, uh, we just feel strongly B and C are not the way to approach the situation. Um, I know I'm just one voice. I just wanted to say thank you. On behalf of the BA, thank you for listening. Um, I wish you the, the best of luck as we move forward in our future conversations. I know I took a long time. Really appreciate everybody listening. Thank you.
No worries, Mr. Fredericks. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's a pleasure to hear from you. Thank you, Kyle. And I just want to thank you and, um, and members of the, of your executive board for, as you know, um, a tremendous amount of, uh, conversation, uh, meeting time together, exchange of information, um, your, your involvement and your members' involvement in the steering committee and the working teams has been critical. Uh, certainly as part of your, of your group, uh, the school nurses, um, are just absolutely vital. Uh, I would just, and I don't want to take point by point. I know that you're not expecting me to do that or us to do that this evening, but I do want to just, uh, say that, you know, there is a lot of work that has to happen between now and, and the beginning of school. And, um, we've made, uh, commitments to make sure that our facilities are safe. Uh, it is not a question of whether they are unsafe now. Characterizing, uh, the air qualities being unsafe, um, is not really a fair assessment. I think the question really becomes how do we adapt and what do we need to do, uh, in the current environment we're in with COVID? Uh, and certainly, um, you know, there are some precautions and some adjustments that we, uh, need to make and, um, as we go through and planning and bringing students and staff back. And, um, as we go through in planning and bringing students and staff back. With that said, we are not standing flat footed. I think you are aware and I think the members are aware, certainly it was enough of a pain during, while the work was happening, that, um, we went through a, um, energy savings project. Every single one of our buildings, uh, HVAC systems, uh, with the exception of East and South Middle School. We are already contracting with a company to come in and do the same with South Middle School. Primarily to come in and assess the conditions of our HVAC systems. We are also, uh, currently in process of working through the high school, um, and, and checking on, um, air exchange and, um, um, the rate of exchange within each one of our classrooms. Uh, we do know that CO2 is a proxy for fresh air exchange. And our plan would be to make sure that this is not a one-time check. That we continue to have an outside assessment coming in throughout the course of the year. Uh, because conditions are going to look different, even though we'll have half the number of students in each one of our, um, classrooms. Which obviously does impact CO2 levels. We don't want to, uh, sit back and, uh, take for granted that, uh, everything is okay. We will be aggressive in our ongoing, uh, testing as we have been. I think the district has demonstrated over the course of the last couple of years, and I can think of, uh, East Middle School specifically, when there were a variety of concerns that came up through the construction process. That we ourselves as a district called the Department of Health in from, uh, the state. And they came in and worked with us and worked with you and the MTA to, uh, set up some protocols. Um, and certainly, uh, we know that, uh, Mary Beth McGrath has, was on that, uh, site every week, in some cases, every single day. We, in the end of this, uh, look to her and her department's expertise in, in building. They, uh, she and her office will be the ones that will, uh, review the data. So we will have, uh, three checks at this, three, three swipes at this. We have already posted on the reopening website, a full assessment of all of our HVAC systems that came from the Naresco, the Energy Savings Project. You can find that at the website that, uh, is showing on the screen right now. Uh, and we will continue to work through the additional assessments that are ongoing. So I, I certainly appreciate, um, the concern and I know this is, uh, difficult for everybody. I just hope that there's, uh, a level of confidence out there among, uh, both staff and, and, and parents that, uh, this school committee, this superintendent and his administration, uh, this mayor, uh, and certainly the, this board of health, the health department at the town, would not be putting forward any options that we did not believe, uh, we could, um, that, that were unsafe. So I respectfully, I, you know, I know it's been a frustrating long process and I know that the information hasn't been, uh, flowing as, as, as quickly as we'd like it to. You can imagine that we're not the only school department who are contracting to have these assessments done. It's a, it's certainly a competitive market, but, uh, we will have that information. Prior to the start of students coming to school, we can make some adjustments if we need to. If we don't have that prior to staff. We can make some adjustments if we don't have it prior to students coming in. But, uh, that information will be, uh, taken care of. It will be available. It will be reviewed by Mary Beth and her office. Before we, uh, move forward. So, um, again, I, I completely respect the concerns of your members. I certainly know that parents share those same concerns. You know, again, I think showing that we are in any of these scenarios, starting at a six-foot physical distancing, uh, that we are, um, hybrid-ing, um, and we are reducing by half every single day the number of students that will be in our buildings of, uh, the hybrid. Clearly, Plan A is a slower start, um, and, you know, the strengths and weaknesses is where that, of that plan were explained earlier. But I did just want to mention that the cleaning protocols be in place, that we will, uh, supplement as we need to with staffing. And then more importantly, um, you know, air quality is not a concern, uh, in terms of our day-to-day operations. We continue to test. It is a question of, um, where, where, how do we move forward in, in managing, the, uh, coronavirus and, and the concerns around that with air quality, uh, in the coming school year. So I know we will continue to talk. I know in fact, we have some, uh, meetings already scheduled. And I look forward to our continued, to, uh, continued work together and respectfully to your members also. I appreciate their, their efforts.
Thank you, Doctor. Uh, next person. Nicole Kerwin. Ms. Kerwin?
Yes, hello. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, so, uh, my question is specifically for Mr. Lee. You had mentioned at a middle school level that synchronous learning would be available for all blocks. And I interpret this to mean that there would be some discretion at the, um, with the teachers as to whether or not they would be offering synchronous le- learning. Is that correct? And what is your vision for synchronous learning, um, on the, for the middle school for all of these blocks?
Uh, some discretion would be an accurate statement. However, you know, we have discussed having minimums and maximums in terms of how much synchronous learning during a given period would be expected. As we had mentioned previously, we do not want, uh, it is not effective to have kids in front of a screen for 50 minutes, uh, just hearing a teacher drone on. So they're obviously given a specific lesson, many different types of activities that could be provided during that, that period. But again, access to that teacher would be available. So that a teacher could make some determinations about in a period, how much synchronous time is needed for the lesson, is needed for the activities, and would most benefit the kids. And again, with that said, we are trying to develop some minimum and maximum standards around that, and that's where the work is presently.
Do you envision that the teachers would be able to, uh, present to the students in advance some sense of how much time they'll be spending? And, and I'm asking this question because, um, you know, we are looking for some additional alternative options during the course of the day. So our son is not in front of a screen all day. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if, if synchronous is going to be, you know, five minutes to check in and then they're off? Or, you know, if they're going to know in advance how much time will be spent?
They, they may have a sense of how much time the teacher in- intends to spend on a specific day. But again, uh, given the different types of lessons that get presented and the emphasis that may or may not be placed on that synchronous component, it could vary somewhat wildly. Internally, we've talked a little bit about minimums around five to 10 minutes and maximums close to 30 minutes. Again, trying to make sure that there's an effective balance between synchronous and asynchronous learning. But the schedule i- is designed to be, or mimic, the regular schedule of, of a day. So that students would be expected to be available throughout the course of that period. Even if the teacher wanted to break out into smaller sessions, uh, which would be possible using Google Meet this fall. And work with smaller groups of students. So, again, our intention is that the student is available throughout the entire course of the day's schedule. But how much synchronous time in terms of, of a specific Google Meet and instruction a teacher might provide could vary greatly dependent upon the lesson.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Just want to, just do a little bit of a check in here. We have been in for 45 minutes and we have still quite a few hands up. If, I would just ask that if you have a question that's kind of been asked before, or if you have a question that you might be able to ask us in one of the public sessions or via email, uh, that would appreciate, be appreciated. We certainly want to get to as many people as possible this evening. Uh, I am going to put up a timer. It's a three-minute timer just to kind of keep us all on pace here. Just it's a visual, uh, cue. So, uh, if you could please limit your questions, uh, to one question, uh, to the best that you can. We, that would be appreciated again, so we can get more, more people in. Uh, so with that.
Thank you.
Next, uh, Devin Wellington.
Mr. Wellington, or Ms. Wellington?
Hi, Mrs. Wellington, yes. Hi. My question is that I was looking at the middle school and the high school schedules for synchronous time and it's pretty clear as to what will be taught. Elementary to me was very unclear and I feel like a morning meeting to do community building or social emotional learning, or to end the day with that is not always the best use of your time when you're only going to have a couple of opportunities for elementary kids to have live instruction from their teacher. You know, the K to two especially, they need like phonics instruction every day. They need a math lesson every day. And live instruction is far more beneficial than a video. And synchronous time is interactive. It's not just the teacher talking to the kids. It's also the kids interacting with each other. They're answering questions. You can do breakout rooms. Lots of opportunity that kids can work together in a remote setting. And I just feel like I need more to know about that in order to make my decision as to hybrid or remote. Um, I know you guys don't have a remote plan, it sounds like, yet. But I don't think we can answer a survey and say, yes, I want remote, and then you figure it out. I need to know who's teaching it, how much synchronous time, and what that's going to look like before I know I can make a decision.
Thank you, Ms. Wellington. And as I had said it earlier, uh, we will, the survey will come out not prior to us being able to give you and, and all parents more information on, on that. Belsey Zetti, please help me if I pronounce that wrong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have a couple of stuff and I'll be brief. So I did, um, I listened to you guys, have been hearing everything from every area. I have a couple of questions. It says that one of the, um, issues that I'm having, it's, uh, the children will ride in the bus and their windows will be open. How do you open, keep windows open in winter in New England? That's my first question. My second question is, as, uh, children will have a half day and then they'll come home and then they'll restart their day again. I don't know who put this into B because if it's an adult, then maybe this is doable. For a child, if they go to school and they come back, I don't think they're going to do the half day, the second part. That's my second question. My third is, is okay to quarantine, but if the test comes back positive, then what? The doctors in the hospital don't know what they're doing. I am a nurse by profession. And I see it every single day. They start you off with a, an experimental drug. And then they do hundreds of thousands of dollars of tests. And if that doesn't work, then they do another experimental drug. And if that doesn't work, and they trial more. And that person, the family, they're faced with a death sentence. I don't know why Braintree is, you know, even putting into paper the options one and two, just like Kyle says. Regardless of what your hemovac systems are set up for, I feel that we should continue with option one. Then when everything is said and done, when everyone is vaccinated, when the vaccines are out, then we can figure out, okay, if we send half of our school, first grade to third grade in school, and we've looked at every aspect of it and we've reevaluated it. And everything comes back to, okay, let's do this, let's do that. That is the best plan for us. So can you please answer me how your windows stay open in winter in New England? And how a child comes home half day, already spent in school, and you expect that child to continue another half day? And please tell me about the, you know, how does that all work? Because I am if, a concerned parent. I have a sixth grader and a seventh grader who I am not sending to school until there is a vaccine that's out and everyone is vaccinated and then we can, we can move forward. I feel like there's a, a bit of, what's the word? A push from, um, up top in sending our kids to school. As a parent, if you can think about how you bear that child in your womb and they survived and you put them in harm's way, just so that the, you know, the government can feel better about themselves? I don't know how this is going to work. Please answer me my questions.
Let me, thank you. Let me just, thank you for your questions. And, um, let me see, I can, you know, I, I can answer a couple of them perhaps. We certainly recognize that the question of, um, of windows open in, uh, in, in our buses represents a, a challenge, not only when we are talking about the colder months, but as well as when we're talking about, uh, for example, a rain, a rain day. So, um, I don't have a good answer for that question. That is the protocol. That is what we're being advised to do. You know, we have got to make sure that we're following the recommendations that are coming from our local and state health officials. And we will do the best we can to manage that. And, but we do certainly recognize the challenges. And, and as we go through the, the routing and the transportation components of this, we will do all we can to, uh, make sure that we are getting students, uh, to school as quickly as possible in terms of the length of their actual, uh, ride. In terms of the, the half day, there's a lot of considerations on the half day. And a big component of this is, is really is, has to do with safety. And, you know, one of the biggest challenges I think school systems face when they're talking about going to the full day is a question of how and where do we feed lunch to our students? And that period of time when students are going to be eating lunch brings an awful lot of students together in the same space. Being a situation where they would have their masks off, obviously, to eat. We looked at several considerations to how we might be able to manage that. We think the best course of action at this point is to start the school year, build up and see how we're doing, and then have the conversations about how would we transition to a full day? And what does that look like? For students who are coming home in the afternoon, they'll continue to have contact with their, with their teachers if there are concerns. Teacher was, would be outreach, uh, reaching out to, to parents and, and to students as well as administrators. I know, uh, it's, will we continue to, to do that outreach? So, uh, that really is, uh, right now, I, I have jotted down the remaining of good questions or other points. And we will try to address those, um, as we, as we move forward. Stephanie McManus.
Hi, I'm speaking as the mother of a kindergartner. Um, and I had some concerns about the schedule you put up. I don't know if there's a way you can go back to the slide that shows like the teachers' day?
Hold on. Challenging me in real time in front of 477 people, but.
I will also just say that I tried to go to the reopening page from the main Braintree School page and it's, the link seems to be broken.
It, it's fixed.
Okay.
And you said the teacher's get, this one?
Yeah. So this seems like a somewhat doable schedule for the teacher until you just said that while they're doing this, they have to go back and forth between two classrooms. And so I'm just super concerned because it's not like they can sort of stagger it. Because when they're not doing the synchronous, you know, stuff with the classroom, they're doing things potentially with the remote students or they have their prep time. And so essentially what you did is you took this hour-long slot, say, for the first section and you split that in half now. And so they're going from, you know, an hour instruction to half an hour or like two bits of 15 stuck in there somehow. And I guess I'm wondering, you know.
So you take that question, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I have to do so. And so on the remote day, as you recall, uh, the teacher has no students in school. All the teachers' students are in school during the in-person day. And so during a remote day, the teachers, all their students are at home that day.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I guess give me the day when they're in the school then?
No, well, I'm referring to the slide. This slide is for when, uh, an elementary, uh, teacher, their class is remote, they're home. And so during a remote day for the teacher, all of that teacher's students are home. As I described, when they come to school, they all come to school. And the teacher works with a para in, in two separate rooms to address the learning needs of all those students in person.
I see. So they're, they're with the students throughout the entire half day?
Correct. On, on the day that the, that, that group, that classroom group of students are in school, the teacher is with those kids using a para.
I see. Um, okay. Well, that's good to know and that makes me feel better. But I, it also was a little bit concerning that that means you end up with 20 kids in an online session. So, you know, last fall I had my son in multiple things online. And it seemed like with kids his age, which is kindergarten again, that, you know, once you got past five, it was kind of crazy. I can maybe see people being able to hold on to 10 if you're really like doing activities that are well-designed. But I don't know how you do more than that. So then are they in breakout sessions? Or how are you dealing with that large class size online?
Uh, one option would be the breakout sessions that you referred to. Uh, Google Meet is supposed to have that functionality this fall. If I were a kindergarten teacher, to your point, I would do exactly that to try to break them up into smaller groups. As you can see, the time is somewhat extended, which would provide the opportunity for that type of activity.
So, thank you very much. Sarah Littenfield.
Hello, thanks for taking my question. A bit of a follow-up on the HVAC systems. I appreciated Mr. Fredericks' comments and Dr. Hackett, your response. It does seem like the data is still. It does seem like the data is still being assembled. I did some looking on the website, and I don't see any report there yet. So I guess I was wondering, when's that data going to be available? And what are the metrics that are being used to analyze acceptable ventilation and air change rates? Because in the absence of more detailed information, I don't see how we can really vote for anything other than option A, because it's much easier to start in a more restricted manner, in lower, in smaller spaces, that you actually know what your ventilation rates are and what your HVAC system is set up for, and you know that it needs current codes, and open up as people become more comfortable with the situation, as we have more information. So I guess I'm trying to get a handle on what is the actual timeline for that? And, and how does that play into needing to make a decision tonight?
Thank you for your question. So we are actually having, while we're trying to stream this meeting, we're having some issues with our actual website. So that will be posted. The assessment done by Naresco, which is the company that did our energy savings project, those data will be posted tonight. It will show you a detailed assessment of each building and what, within the HVAC system, work that was done, things that needed to be repaired. The air exchange studies again is still, those are still happening, and will work in coordination with the town health department. And, you know, the, the bottom line is, is if we have, if the town health department, and Ms. McGrath comes back and says to us, we have a classroom that should not be in use, then we would take it off use. And if you remember, those of you who have been paying attention to all the hours and hours that we've been talking, which is extraordinary if you've been able to just hang on, that we have left intentionally our large core spaces unscheduled. So if we have a situation where we have to move a classroom or a group of classrooms, if we have a situation we need to think differently about how we schedule because we have classrooms of concern, then we have the flexibility to do that. So thank you for your question. Sheila Ilinski, please help me with your pronunciation.
Must be a technical problem. Should be unmuted.
I'm gonna come, I'll come back.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
I'm a Braintree teacher, but I'm not a resident. I just have a comment and a concern about the B1 and B2 hybrid schedule, just pertaining to the start time of the school day. I have a young child, and I just became aware that daycares in Massachusetts changed their hours of operation due to COVID restrictions. And so almost every daycare, well, actually, all the ones I've called are opening an hour or two later, which is 7:30 or 8 o'clock in the morning. And I'm a commuter, so I depend on this childcare. So I'm just kind of have concerns about getting my own son to school safely if I'm asked to teach in person. So I just hope the school committee is considering this when they create their in-person schedules. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And we are still exploring some onsite before and after-school care options, so. Mike Carroll, I'm not sure who this is, but, Mr. Carroll.
Hi, good, good evening. Thank you for letting me talk. I had a few comments. I'm probably maybe a little bit from the other side, from where a lot of people have been tonight, talking about the asynchronous versus synchronous in the screen time. I know there was a couple of discussions about trying to minimize the screen time, but I think the more asynchronous there is, the more time my daughter's gonna be re-watching and spending more time in front of the screen. So I think anything we can do, like George Kokoros had said, to increase the synchronous would be great. And I think we've done a lot, a lot better tonight than we had last week, so I appreciate that. As far as the teachers teaching a class and having both groups of kids in the same school, they're, they're already being limited to a half a day. And now, half of that half a day, the teachers aren't even going to be in the class. It's gonna be a parent. So again, it just seems like we're really cutting down the, the teacher time in front of the students. So I think from my perspective, anything we can do to better that would be great. And I guess the, the question I really have, and I know that this may not be able to be fully answered, but is there, what is the, the, the plan right now when you're going from a half a day to a full day? Or, you know, how, how are you gonna ramp that up? And I know it, it probably depends on COVID and everything else, but is, what, what is the, the tentative plan for that right now?
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. So I, the, the plan for ramping up and looking at extending the day would be tied to metrics that we'd be working with the Department of Health on, Mary Beth McGrath's office, as well as certainly with others. You know, I've continued to say, I think, you know, for us, this start is important for how we manage, and it really is why we're starting with a half day, for all those reasons that we really want to make sure that we are learning as we go. For us, and within the schools, and the management of the virus, the management of the cases is really gonna determine how, we also be one of the metrics for how we move forward. We will spell that out more clearly moving forward, once the school committee makes a decision. So thank you. Kelly Chambers. Ms. Chambers.
Hi there. My question is, I have a daughter going into grade one, and she's gonna be going to like a private daycare, because I teach actually in the city, and I have to go there. So she's really at the private daycare, I don't think gonna be able to attend on those remote days, because I just not gonna put that expectation on our daycare worker. So will she be penalized if she does not attend class?
I would have to, I don't know the answer to that question. I would have to think that through a little bit more. We'd have to have some more conversations around that. We, we recognize that those, the situations like yours are out there. So we would have to think through that some more.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, certainly. Just a little bit of a time check for everybody. We have, right now, 21 hands are still raised, and we've been in this session for, with comments specifically for an hour and 10 minutes. So again, if you have a question that you might be able to get answered through an email, don't forget, we have the, the parent sessions, staff sessions coming up this week. And again, if, if you could, just really try to limit yourselves as best you can. So much appreciated. We're really trying to get to everybody. Daniel Bertoldi.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for taking, taking my call. My son is gonna be entering Braintree High School. He's special needs, and I was wondering if at this time, if you had any more information on the possible daycare that you mentioned, at-home childcare?
We don't currently, but we are, again, we're working on that, and a big part of it will deter, will be determined by the plan that is selected this evening as to what we, what problem we're trying to help solve for parents.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a situation where he can email in his specific situations, and perhaps we can help? That would, yeah, thank you for the suggestion. So you can email us your individual situation. If you can email me directly if you'd like, and then I'll have a little bit more information and be able to see if we can get some more answers. But we will have more answers in general on that question as we move forward in the coming days and weeks. Sean, you could help me with your pronoun, the pronunciation of your name?
Frank, I'm hearing there's a little reverberation when you're speaking, so you might wanna take off. Maybe it's your mask, it's reverberating.
I got all kinds of stuff.
I know. Listen, we wanna hear.
I can barely talk in a normal conditions. I think we know that.
Well, this is a live album, so we're doing what we can here. So you might wanna take the thing off or something like that. Okay.
I don't seem to be able to unmute. I'm gonna move on to Stella Fidler.
We will come back to that previous person. Okay.
Hi, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Welcome.
Thank you for taking my question. I appreciate all the work you guys have been doing. I had two quick questions. The first one is around sick days. How will they be recorded? How will they be, will it be the same as before where if they're out on COVID, because they do get sick, that that's considered one incident? And then my second part question has to do around with the elementary special education program proposal. If regardless of what option you guys decide and vote on tonight, will the four, four half-days be in place for option one, two, or three?
I will let Mr. Lee take some of that question, if you don't mind, Mr. Lee.
Not at all. In, in terms of the attendance that you discussed, when people are out quarantined, although they would be marked absent, because that's just how we track students' location or participation, they would not be penalized in any way for that particular absence, as obviously would be excused from the school's point of view. In terms of your second question about specialized programming, regardless of the plan that gets selected tonight, we would still be looking to, for certain programs, having those four days in person for some of our more vulnerable populations.
Thank you very much. Sandra, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to help me with your name.
Itzik.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
Well, now I've lost her.
Oh, boy.
I didn't lose her. I don't, not me specifically, I just can't find her. If she could perhaps raise your hand again. We'll move on to Sadie Patel.
Hello?
Hello, good evening.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate all the efforts gone into it. A couple of questions regarding the remote, remote learning. I actually am gonna have four children in the Braintree School System from kindergarten up to middle school. I'm just wondering how on earth parents are gonna be monitoring what goes on on these computers and what sites people are going to, and also, how are we supposed to be getting these devices? I mean, I know other school districts in other states are actually providing the hardware, as well as all the applications and appropriate security protocols for children being on the internet. Obviously, parents work full-time, so we can't be sitting there watching over the shoulders of kids and looking at your schedules. I'm basically gonna be full-time policing my kids, because I have one in each, basically bracket, all the way up to middle school. So that's the first question on there, and whether or not Braintree Schools or their IT department are gonna be able to assist on setting these things up and appropriate safety protocols. I am concerned in the amount of screen time. There's been several studies, well, well-publicized studies about the frontal lobe effects on children, and, and also the diminished social skills for, for people who are on the, constantly on the internet, and they are part of the school life. The second question is to do with, has the Braintree Public School people, have you guys looked at opportunities to use some of these wide-open spaces you have to have additional buildings, maybe temporary buildings bought in, to have electric heat and air conditioning and so on supplied? So you can have more classrooms essentially spread out on the grounds that you already have, rather than just using the same old buildings you have, which may have or may not have some issues with this air quality. So it's just, just throwing it out there, you know, I used to work a lot with the military. They set up tents ready to go in wartime conditions. They're able to teach classrooms in there. No problems in a matter of minutes. So just wondering if Braintree's looked at that, or even mobile offices being pulled in from construction sites or something like that, the same sort of things there.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. And I will do the best I can to try to answer some of your questions. And I know some of those were comments also for consideration. So we've taken some notes. I will say that, again, our efforts in scheduling the buildings to start, we've been very conservative with leaving larger spaces within our schools open. We will take advantage of outdoor learning opportunities. We have purchased some canopies. And we will do that when weather is permitting. We did not want to schedule ourselves into that for all the reasons why it's gonna be challenging to keep the windows down on our buses. We need to make sure that when we schedule our spaces, that those spaces will be reliable in any conditions. To answer also just the question on technology, we're very fortunate to have an outstanding technology team here several years under our director Rebecca Kidwell. You will find on our website, a reopening website, a lot of information about our technology, both distribution of devices. We've done an outstanding job with that, and we'll continue to work hard to make sure that happens. We also have a, an app that we've invested in called Family Zone that is gonna be very helpful for parents in terms of the, kind of your concerns around managing the activity of your children online. And if you have one of our devices, we, the filtering that we use will be on that device, and that will help additionally with some protection from our students getting into sites that they should not be on. So that's, that's just a few quick answers to those questions. I have, again, written down the remainder. And I'm happy to, if you'd like to email me or call me, we could, I could talk to you a little bit more about some of the other questions around outside, other spaces available. With that, then Laura Branko. Ms. Franco? Franco.
Yes, hi.
Hi, good evening.
Sorry, picture of my kids there, sorry. Okay, so there they are. I have one going into seventh grade and one going into fourth grade in Highlands. And I have a couple of different questions. The first is really kind of a comment and a question about the health and safety side of things. As far as the process that's in place that we heard from Ms. McGrath earlier, I did appreciate the extra commentary by the head of the nursing department to sort of reinforce that that doesn't, at least to me, it doesn't seem like it takes into account the asymptomatic spread, which seems to be more the case with children, even more so than with adults, if I'm listening to the experts correctly. So I guess I'd just like to underscore what was said at the beginning too, that a gradual start is probably the most helpful way to go. So although my family is probably leaning towards full remote, and there's lots of questions about that, I suppose for voting purposes, I'd put my hand in the air for option A as well. But my specific question about health and safety is, I've heard a couple of times in these meetings about an isolation room. So if a child does show up at school and is deemed to have a fever and different symptoms, they're put into an isolation room. Can you tell us a little bit more about what that will look and feel like to these kids, and what that experience will be like?
Well, that's, that's a really good question, because I'm gonna try to not, like, some confinement certainly, and it is a little, a little, the name we've picked so far doesn't really sound warm and inviting. I will let Mr. Lee answer that question on a general level, and then Ms. Albauser can, can jump in as well.
So at a general level, an isolation room is just an additional space near or connected to the nurse's office, where kids who have symptoms can be kept until somebody can come and pick them up. It would be supervised. It will be made as warm and inviting as possible. But it is an effort, obviously, to remove that person from interacting with others at the point in time where we do not really know if they have, you know, contracted COVID or not. So it is something of a holding bin, a warm, inviting, and nicely supervised holding bin as we make decisions about getting that child home and to parents who can better care for them.
Jean, do you have anything to add to that? Or Mary Beth?
Sure, just as, as in the beginning, I, I mentioned that in order to keep our whole school community safe, we're gonna have to really collaborate, and everybody's gonna have to work together. The isolation room is just that. It's just to keep the kids separated from everybody else while they, while they wait for their parents or guardians to come get them. So it's really important that as people prepare to go back to school, that they think about who will be that person to come and get their children, so that we can do that as quickly as possible. These rooms are designed to, anybody in them, we could have more than one child, and, but they would always have to be six feet apart and masked. The same, the same recommendations go in the isolation room as any classroom in any space in the school.
Thank you. Kevin Powers.
Mr. Powers, good evening.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
First off, just wanted to say thank you to everyone there for all the time and effort they've put into everything. I know it's been a lot of work, so I definitely appreciate that. My comment is more, not a question, just a quick comment, guys, is that I really feel like the last four months of the year were obviously tough on everyone. Nobody's fault, obviously. But going forward now, I, I really wanna see the kids back in school, whether it's hybrid or full-time or whatever it may be. I'm pretty confident that you guys will figure out how the teachers and the students can all be safe. But that, that would be my vote if I was to vote, and I hope you guys will see it that way also. That's all I have to say. Thanks so much.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Powers. Kwan?
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. I have a question, like, when we will need to be vote, and when is the deadline? How we can vote, and when is the deadline?
So this is not, it's a great question, thank you. It's clarifying the process. Under the law, the school committee has the sole authority. They are the only body that actually is charged with approving the plan that we're going to be entering into this fall. So it's not a public ballot. It is actually in the, in the charge of the school committee to make that decision. It is actually in the charge of the school committee to make that decision. The school committee will be taking up this question after this public hearing in a meeting that's also public that you can stick around for if you'd like. And they will hopefully be, they will certainly be considering the options and voting, and then we'll be submitting the selected plan to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I would also say that, you know, we know that we're still four weeks out from school starting, so what we submit tomorrow may need to be adapted and changed, and, you know, we've got a lot of good people who will be continuing to review the conditions and discussing on both how we can, how we can make it better as we move forward. So that actually is the process, and I do appreciate the question because I should have been a little bit more clear in the beginning of it as to how this is gonna work. I have natured Roots, if you could just tell us who you are, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hi, sorry, it's Jennifer Lynn. It just wouldn't let me switch it, it's my business account. Sorry about that. I do wanna say thank you. I know you guys have spent a ton of time on this, so I'll just keep it brief, but I'm kind of interested in what the situation with substitutes looks like. If a teacher's out and they have to be out, for example, 10 days, or even if it's just one day, whatever that is, what does that look like for somebody coming in? I know me personally, as a substitute, I'm not going to do it this year for a few reasons, unfortunately. So what does that look like for substitutes being in for a para or for being in for a regular classroom teacher?
Thank you for your questions. So, I mean, the process itself would look similar to the way that it looks now, and I think, you know, your point about maybe the question more is about what is the pool of substitutes gonna look like, and how do we make sure that we have enough substitutes? We do struggle with that when we're not even in this situation. But we also know that we do have, we do have a list out there, we would likely be looking to hire probably more long-term permanent subs to help us out with that. And we would making, be taking advantage of all staff as we do now. I mean, there are times when actually when a principal covers a classroom, or we pull a pair professional and pay a differential as per the contract for them to cover a classroom. So it's really gonna be all hands on deck. We recognize that, you know, it may or may not go smoothly depending on the day, but we've gotten pretty adept at being able to manage the substitute situation, even in times where we're not dealing with a COVID virus. So, thank you. Brooks?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I have two high school students, and I, like another person, I forget what the slide said on the two half-days. The latter part of the day, I can't remember if it was asynchronous or synchronized, and I know it's hard to put that particular slide back up.
It would be hard for me, maybe not for anybody else, but.
Okay, so my only concern is that if it was synchronized, and these kids have to, you know, get home walking from the high school, or however they're getting home, to then be online and back in the classroom. But again, it could be asynchronous, so I'm just, I'm not sure what the slide said.
Sure, I'll let Mr. Lee take that.
Right, so on the high school slide, if we were able to pull it back up, you would see that the afternoon sessions at the high school are scheduled at this point to be synchronized. There is a good deal of time between dismissal in that class. I think it's at least an hour for students to get back to home and get prepared for the next lesson. But the afternoon sessions are indeed synchronized.
Thank you very much. Again, just checking in with us as a total group, we have been at this now for an hour and a half, and we have 14 people still with hands raised. If you could just try to keep to one question, and we'll do the best we can to answer it as quickly as we can. And then we can, again, continue to have this discussion and fill out the frequently asked questions. Ross McDonald.
Good evening, Mr. McDonald. Sorry. Hi, good evening. Thanks very much for taking my call, I really appreciate it. My wife and I both work full-time in education, and so I deeply appreciate all that you are going through, because I've been going through the same thing for the last few months. I personally, I think that the health and safety, option A is the best option. We've been going through similar discussions of where I teach. But my main thing is this, in the time I have, you talk about using the Google platforms, because that's fiscally affordable. However, I've been really fortunate to teach remotely using other platforms which cost money. You also need to provide for all the students, and there probably will sadly come a time in the next few months where we will have to go remote. So there'll be student needs as well. So my thing is this, what can we as a town do fiscally to support the schools? That's my main thing, because everything in the end of the day, sadly, a lot of this needs fiscal resources. And is there anything that the town can do as a town, we the people, to help our students? I have two in the Braintree School System, and that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. You know, it's a great, I appreciate the question. We are very fortunate. We always have been, to receive strong support from the town, from the mayor's office, from the town council, certainly our parents through their own fundraising efforts at our local schools. You know, we are also going into this, we're fortunate that there are funds that have been made available to us that we've been able to leverage, both through grant opportunities as well as some federal funding for reimbursements. And we really are, you know, recognizing that last spring was a tremendous struggle, and I know a lot of parents, and understandably so, have been concerned about remote learning and knowing that the only experience you've had with us with remote learning was last spring. You know, I'm proud of what we were able to do, but I certainly recognize that we were flying the plane as we were trying to fix it. We were not in a position at that point where we really were prepared to enter that kind of an environment. But since that time, you know, through our IT department, through some really hard work from a lot of people, we've been very fortunate to be able to really ramp up our abilities, both from a hardware and a software standpoint. We are we are very well-prepared to go into whatever remote learning portion we're talking about, whether it's the the days that are not in-person for students in the hybrid, or whether we are talking about students who would be in full remote. So very much appreciate the question, sure that there may be some things that I could come back to later, and, you know, maybe there's opportunities. But again, we've invested heavily, and we started early in March, and we really started in March thinking about, okay, one, how do we get through this year, but more importantly, let's make sure we're positioned well going into next year for any possible scenario that can happen. So we put a lot of orders in early, and we've really ramped up, again, both on our hardware and our software side. So thank you very much for the question. Next would be, it's one name, so, and I would ask you, if you've already asked a question, if you have your hand up again, if you couldn't put your hand down, we really wanna try to get at least to everybody once if we can. Shauna Stock, it's can help me if I pronounce that incorrectly.
That's great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, what's the pronunciation of your name?
Shauna, last name is Stock, sorry, it's all together.
This is one word, thank you.
I just wanna thank you guys for taking my questions, for all your flexibility and everything you're working around. I am also an educator, I know that all of the work going through this has been, you know, overwhelming. I do wanna say I support Plan A. My main concern is with the remote learning, I wanna know, like, will it be taught by Braintree teachers? Will they be following the curriculum that is specific to the Braintree's curriculum map? Meaning they're reading the same novels, they're picking up at the same spot that they left off last year with math, science, history. That's my main concern. I do have concerns about if it is outsourced. You know, we've been drilling it into our daughter that internet safety, only communicating with people you personally know online, will these online teachers, if it's not being taught by Braintree teachers, will they be fingerprinted, queried? Will we be able to be comfortable that these are like safe people teaching our kids if it's not within the district? Then I would be reluctant to choose remote learning if it is not being held by Braintree teachers. But as my daughter is going into eighth grade, I would be concerned that she'll be walking 2.2 miles to school. We've mapped it out ourselves, we've taken the walk, it's about 45 minutes. If she's doing a half-day schedule, would she be home in time for her next afternoon course? Would she be penalized if she would not be home? And I understand somebody just asked that question. So those are my main concerns. Thank you so much for the time.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm glad you asked the question, and I heard it asked, actually, or said earlier from another question, another person with a question, but I don't really understand where the outsourcing of remote learning is coming from. It's not our intention to outsource anything. Now, we may have an option that parents may want to choose, that would be a freestanding online option. But that would be really much more of a actual courses that are online that we would be, we would have our hand in in terms of trying to support students, but that would be something that parents could choose if they want to, and those options are, you know, there are a lot of pros and cons with them. We have not decided on whether we're gonna do that or not, but we are exploring it. I know some other school systems have made the decision to do that also. It is problematic from a certain standpoint, because to your other point, those don't necessarily cover our curriculum in the way that we cover it with the timing. So our intention is to staff our remote learning with our own staff. We believe that we can, we can do that, that we can manage it, and until we have that built out, it's, again, a little bit hard to tell you exactly what that looks like, but that is, that's our intention. So thank you. Kristi Carter.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Ms. Carter.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. The first one, I think, is probably pretty easy to answer. For middle schoolers, when they're in school, are they actually gonna be sitting in like their homeroom and their teachers will rotate for them, or will they be switching classes?
Ms. Lee?
To a large degree, they will stay in the room, the teachers will move. Again, cohorting by teams could allow a little bit of movement for kids during the course of the day while still not integrating them with other groups of students. So the intent and the goal will be to keep the cohorts separate from other groups of students.
Okay, great. And then just a second question to follow up on the bus transportation. So for middle schoolers, as we know, the sixth graders are going to get buses, but the seventh and eighth aren't. So if my child is going, I live in the Highlands, over to East, if that's the option that comes into play, have we kind of given consideration that the traffic in Braintree, I mean, it takes me 15 minutes to get to East on a Saturday for soccer, whereas in the morning, you know, it takes a lot longer because of, we all know Braintree traffic is not that great. So I just wanted to raise that point that, you know, for those of us who are not feeling safe to put our child on a bus, that we're driving across town for three hours and then turning around, going back to get them at the same time. So, that's all.
Thank you, and that certainly is a consideration. We had listed that challenges of some of the options. We recognize that. I also, again, just wanna make sure that it's clarified, that our first run at transportation is to provide, make sure we're hitting the in compliance with state law. And our hope is to do better than, obviously, we don't want, we wanna try to get every student we can on a bus if they want to do that. We've been generous in the past with our transportation department, we've well, gone well beyond what the law would require us to do. But again, we will continue to try to find ways to provide transportation opportunities to as many students as we can. Grace Garcia?
Yes, good evening, thank you. I'm a parent of a rising or soon to be in seventh and ninth grader, and I have a question and a comment, and I'll start with my comment. And that is, you know, I strongly urge the committee to select one of the B options as that is the only one that allows both middle and high school kids to go and not have to wait six to eight weeks until they can have in-person learning. I've heard and understand and respect the concerns that have been raised. It's clear to me that there's been due diligence and that there's safety protocols in place. You know, but the data that's out there, and certainly that our governor and the experts have provided, allow for in-person learning now. You know, as we know, that the remote learning is simply not as effective as in-person learning, and we've heard a lot of the problems tonight that in-person, I mean, remote learning has, and that's technology. Whether it's people muting, can't be heard, interruption, and that's all the more frustrating for our children as they're trying to spend at least half a day, if not full days on Wednesday, doing remote learning. And so, you know, the only way that we can have this, you know, in terms of the middle school and high schoolers be able to meet their teachers, develop those relationships, meet their classmates, you know, from the beginning, is to choose one of the B options. We know that, you know, there is a chance that things could change as winter takes place. And to really waste the opportunity now while our numbers are low, where they could have in-person learning would really be detrimental to the middle schoolers and high schoolers who need to be engaged, need to be actively engaged with their teachers, form those relationships. And Braintree has great teachers, and so I really hope that the committee in making a decision won't waste this time, you know, in September and October, when they could be going to school those two half-days and delay it. And so that's my comment. Again, I ask that you choose one of the B options. And my question is, and it goes back to Ms. Carey's question early on, is why for the middle school schedule is gym given preference over one of the common core subjects such as social studies or science? The in-person learning is really critical. Gym is one of those that, at least in the past, they've had to change clothes, certainly, you know, there's gonna be more activity at that time with masks, but it would seem to me that if you're going to have a half-day in-person, that that should be used for social studies or science. So is there a reason why gyms being given preference?
Thank you. So, and the question that you just asked about, that's, the schedule was kind of asked earlier, so I'm going to just make note of that again, and we will continue to work on that because it has been asked a couple of times. I would also just ask respectfully, respectfully, that you do not judge our teachers and their technology ability to pull off remote learning based on my ability to do this meeting tonight. I am challenged to do the timer and switch slides, and I've got an awful lot of people who are a lot better at this than I am, so I just halfway jokingly just saying that.
You're doing fine, thank you, sir.
I appreciate your support. Chanel. Good evening, Chanel.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had already asked a question, and I forgot to put my.
That's all right, thank you very much, thank you. Hope you have a great evening. Last name is DuPont, that's a, I'm not quite sure though. Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, Ms. DuPont.
Okay, I'm gonna break the rules here, I'm gonna try to squeeze in a couple of things here.
I got my finger on the new button, but go ahead.
One is, how closely are you guys going to try to synchronize for people who choose full remote versus the people that are doing hybrid, because you were saying that there are going to be like jump-in points for the people that do choose full remote if they want to swap in, but also, let's say there's a family member that gets sick, and then that child has to quarantine for 14 days. Obviously, then they would have to go to full remote even if they didn't choose that option. So I wanted to know how closely you're gonna try to synchronize the curriculums for those two, but also it was in the last meeting, I think it was the math director had mentioned that they are going to completely skip material that was that was not covered last year, and they're just gonna start as if this were a normal year with all the regular checkpoints and metrics and all that. I don't understand how in subjects like math and science that are like building block subjects, how you could possibly do that, and I don't know the reasoning behind it because it's not like one or two kids missed the material, everyone's in the same boat. I just don't know why they would choose to skip the material, and I even don't understand how this year, at the end of the year, it's gonna be a normal year for the kids. I don't feel that they're gonna be meeting their normal curriculum standards and checkpoints and metrics for this year either, so I just don't know how they're, why that decision was made. I don't know if this is the correct forum for that, or if this is meant for like.
Thank you for a re-clarification, though.
Well, no, actually, I think I can clarify a little bit, and then I'll ask Ms. Lee to jump in if I mess this up, but just the general answer to your question about syncing the curriculum, we have been working really hard on that. And that is a major, major concern and a goal for us as we build out the full remote learning plan for parents and teachers, sorry, parents and students who want to do that option. Because to the point that was made by Mr. Lee earlier, we will have jump-in points. So the coordination between our remote learning and what we're doing in-person and hybrid will be as tight as we can possibly make it. Secondly, I believe, and I just don't, I don't mean to speak for Ms. Miller, but our math director and Mr. Lee, please step in and help me if I mess this up, but I believe that the comment that was made or the conversation the other night was.
But I believe that the comment that was made or the conversation the other night was not that we're going to skip the standards that we didn't get to in the spring or the instruction we didn't get to in the spring, but to your, to the last point that you made, we cannot in any of our content areas spend the first three months just trying to bring forward what we, what may not have been covered in depth because of the situation of having to dismiss in March, because that will only put our kids further behind. So the effort is to take those standards that we would, would not, we're not able to get to in the depth that we normally would have in the spring and sequence them out throughout the course of next year within the curriculum so that we are going to get to them, but we're also not going to hold our curriculum back and set ourselves fine moving forward. But Mr. Lee, can you, did I come anywhere close on that? Yeah, unlike technology, you kind of nailed that part of the answer. So it's exactly as Dr. Hatton explained and what Ms. Miller conveyed at the last meeting. We want to maintain grade level work for our students, even though there might be some deficits from the spring. And the math department and other departments will work to embed some of the skills that they might have missed during the spring into current lessons that are moving forward with grade level material so that they do have the talents that they need to be able to accomplish that work correctly.
Thank you. Again, just checking in as a total group here and reminding you all that we have more public sessions coming up. You can also email us your questions. This is not your only shot to get questions asked. We are now an hour and 45 minutes into this. The school committee does have a meeting after this session, and we have, still have, well, now we have nine. Thank you for those who put your hand down, and we'll try to get to them as best we can. Monica.
Good evening, Monica.
Good evening. Thank you for, you know, giving me the opportunity to raise my question. I have a question. My, my daughter, one of my daughters is going to high school, and she has this question, in fact, is that how are, how are they going to work if they go to school? How are they going to work between rotating these kids? Because some of them are in advanced, some of them are in proficient, and you have mentioned that the same, so for example, A and B are in the same classroom because they're in the English advanced level. But in the second session, the B student is in proficient and she has to rotate, and you want to maintain the same group of students, how is it going to work?
Thank you for your question. Ms. Lee.
If I understood correctly, it was a question about cohorting. And we are looking at several options around cohorting. You know, the easiest way to look at it would probably be alphabetical, but we are also looking at ways that we can ensure that the classes are properly balanced at the high school. Cohorting at the elementary and the middle school level is a little bit simpler than the high school, and so we are still exploring the most efficient way to cohort the high school students. And I hope that I answered your question. I have to admit that I had a little difficulty understanding exactly what it was.
Karen O'Connell. Ms. O'Connell.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I just wanted to ask quickly, is the September 16 reopening date firm? Or is there any chance that there might be a delay and that might be pushed back?
That would be the first day for students. So that is firm to the extent that, you know, I understand that if we need to make adjustments, what we do have the option of doing is even if we had to make any kind of adjustments, we also, we also have the option of remote. Just as an example, if we have a situation where we need to start a little bit later because of something unforeseen, but the first instructional day, and we don't anticipate that, but the first instructional day is firm of September 16. And we will continue to work the schedule through the end of December. We'll ask the school committee to approve a calendar through the end of December, and then we will reassess going into the second semester.
Okay.
Thank you. Hassan, help me, please, if I mispronounced.
You pronounce it perfectly.
Oh, God, I'm nailing them tonight. Thank you.
My question concerns remote synchronous teaching for kindergarten and grade one. Is there any supervision from parents required? Because I doubt if any kid at that age can operate properly the computer as instructed if they are left alone. A few months ago, we had this experience, my son was at Manitica, and we had this optional weekly sessions, which in spite of very valuable and great effort by the teacher, now, these sessions were very ineffective because many of the kids were left alone and they couldn't interact or mute or unmute or properly respond to the teachers. So is there any plan or any thoughts given to this idea of what's happening for kids at that age when they want to do synchronous, synchronous remote sessions? And it's my main concern because I'm actually supportive of this idea of remote learning mostly. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your question. It's a great question. We, you know, we recognize certainly developmental needs of our students vary, their ability to do things independently, which was one of the reasons why that's reflected. For example, in Plan A, you know, we want to get our younger students back for, we want to get all of our students back, but in prioritizing for that particular plan, we recognize that remote learning is even more difficult because our children at that age really are not able to, you know, they may or may not be able to access. Parent situations and family situations are all different. So we, you know, fortunately, we have some great people. We will be all hands on deck. Our IT department will be available constantly. They already put out videos and help in supporting us, parents and families for online learning, remote learning. And we also have invested in some platforms that we had talked about at the last meeting that will make parents' lives and students' lives a lot easier at home, single sign-on options and some things like that. But we certainly recognize that concern, and we will continue to try to mitigate those issues as best we can. Nadia Johnson.
Hi. Someone asked earlier about asymptomatic spread, and that part of her question wasn't answered. So especially since there seems to be concern that children are more likely to be asymptomatic spreading the disease. What are the procedures in place to mitigate risk and exposure in those cases? Like, will there be increased testing in the town or anything like that?
Thank you for your question. I would ask that Mary Beth McGrath take that if she would, and Jean, if you have, want to fall in behind.
Sure. So the, the monitoring process will still be followed by the school nurse. So if a child is needing to be sent to the school nurse for a review or monitor, that will be done. The school nurse will make, will do the evaluation and then make the determination if that child needs to be placed in the isolation quarantine area and parent or guardian contacted or sent back to class. And Jean can also jump in and add to my comment.
So some of the mitigating factors that we plan on doing for the asymptomatic spread and to keep everybody in that community safe is that we are going to try to keep all the kids six feet apart. They will be wearing masks when they come to school. So those are some of, and again, we will be asking parents and guardians to make sure that they go over that symptom list every single day, they communicate with the school nurses should there be a problem at home. And when we send them home, the students that we identify will have to be, will have to go for a COVID-19 test. As, and we're also doing the same thing with staff. So staff are going to be asked to go through those questions every day. And we really, it's critical that when you're not feeling well and you have one of those symptoms, that you are not around other people.
Thank you very much. And I do want to come back to, and one of the things that should have been included on the slide that talks about what's going to be in common for any of the options, we are requiring wearing a mask pre-K through 12. We recognize that that will be a challenge for certain age levels, and we will continue to recognize developmentally best practices. But I wanted to make sure that people know that that's where we are starting, and we, again, will recognize the fact that we'll have to make some adjustments with individual students and staff along the way. So I have, it's SM, but it's Henderson Jr., I believe.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, yes, I just have a question. At first, I want to say thank you to everybody for your efforts with these discussions and how much you have all labored over these issues in the past months, weeks, and days leading up to going back to school. I am a teacher in Braintree, and I just had a quick question. I'm going back to Kyle Frederick's comment about staff and their concerns and their safety. Is there an alternate plan in play if the school committee votes for a person for in-person or hybrid, but there's not enough teachers that volunteer for in-person teaching? And would this force a remote learning, like a remote learning situation?
Thank you for your question, and it's a great question. You know, we're, we're confident that we're going to be able to staff this as, in, to meet the needs of our students coming back in terms of what they're choosing to do. We will have better information. I wouldn't want to speculate on that yet as we go through and do our staff surveys and then staffing assignments. But next week, when we get out with our survey of parents, again, with more clear information about what our full remote program would look like so that they have as much information as we can give them so they can make an informed decision. So I think right now, I wouldn't want to speculate on it, but I, within the coming couple of weeks, we'll, we will have a much better idea. But we will certainly work to figure it out. So thank you very much for the question. We're getting there. Mr. Devon.
By all means, say thank you, doctor.
Okay, if any of you who have your hands up right now, there are three of you, I feel like one or two of you might have asked a question before. So if you could just check to see if you forgot to put your hand. Sandra, I want to try you again. Okay, Sandra, I'm not able to let you talk because you have an older version of Zoom. So I'm sorry, we're not going to be able to get to you. If you could put your question in an email to me, that would be great. Kristi Carter. Good evening, Ms. Carter.
Sorry, I meant to lower my hand, sorry.
Okay, thanks for being honest. And Charlie Knock, I think, help me with your pronunciation. I didn't do it correctly.
Mr. Knock.
You should, you should be okay if you, I think you're muted on your end.
Technical difficulties? Didn't we have another gentleman before that had a hard to pronounce name? Is he still with us?
Okay. Whoop, whoop. Mr. Knock.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we got you. Good evening.
Oh, great, thank you. Thank you for answering my question. I have one question, I have one comment. So I'll give my comment first, that I hope the committee consider option B. I believe the school department's going to keep our kids safe, just like all other department in Braintree, you know, that police, everybody's has been working, and I myself am a central worker, so I have been working. So we'll try to keep everyone safe. Also, my kids been, you know, they've been in the baseball throughout the summer, so I think most of the kid playing baseball was safe, and the soccer's coming up too. So that's my comment, just, you know, having kids together, I think they're better for throughout the summer and for rest of the learning. My question is that if, I, like I said, I prefer the hybrid option, but the other people can also choose a full remote anyways. Is it correct? Or just once you. Yeah, so I believe that, you know, even though going through the hybrid option, there are other people can, you know, choosing the full remote. So I hope that the committee, you know, consider the hybrid option, and especially the full-time worker, myself and my wife, that is very difficult for us, you know, between March to June, to watch our kids, you know, to be completing their work at all the times and doing our own job in the same time is very difficult. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, so somebody trying to sneak your hand up here at the last minute. I am going to call on John Cass because he was quicker than I. The Cass? Mr. Cass, good evening. Or the Cass, someone from the Cass family?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, thank you so much, school board members, Mayor Kukoris, and the administration. Thanks for working on the options for opening for school year 2020, 2021. Let me just say that my vote would be for option R, fully remote, apart from some IEP students and the kids of emergency and essential workers. As a parent, we're going to be keeping our kids remote. We've got two kids, one in elementary and one in middle school. I have a couple of questions, about three or four. Will the remote learning option be taught by Braintree School District teachers who were employed last year in the district? Will the remote learning option be different from the in-person options in terms of curriculum? Prior to last week's meeting, the options were to restrict students to new buildings and go mostly remote. There seems to have been a substantial change in the options since then. Want to ask about the changes. Why were the changes made while influence the changes? And what is the public record of this change in thinking? There's now less trust on my family's part because of the change. We suspect that the change was a result of opinions expressed rather than science. I thought Kyle's points tonight were well-taken and confirmed that option B, one and two are not safe. Thanks so much, folks, for working on the school board opening plan in an effort to keep our kids and community safe.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Thank you, Mr. Cass. I don't, you, I don't know that I get all of your questions. We tried to stick to one, second, a few more. But if you would just, if you could email me those questions, and I will, I can put them in the FAQ, and I can answer them directly. I just want to make sure that I don't get them wrong. So appreciate the time. We are all done, Mr. Chair. All questions have been, hands have been, have been raised and answered. All right, any people that still have questions, if you phone call or email to Central Office, we'll do what we can to try and answer them, get back to them if they're case-specific. At this point in time, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamere.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Public hearing is now closed. We will resume with our regular school committee meeting. We've already called order, and what we're doing. Would you be interested in entertaining like a five-minute break? And I ask for very personal reasons if you can look at the size of this. By all means, I don't think we have a problem with doing a five-minute break, do we?
No, yes, let's do it.
Okay. See you back in five minutes, people. Thank you. Thank you. Top of it. Excuse me? Are we back on? Okay. People, we're back on with our school committee meeting. Thank you for the five-minute break. Do we have everyone? Mr. Mayor, you with us? Ms. Saros, you with us?
I am. I'm just eating Oreos. Sorry.
I love you. Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
I'm here.
Ms. Dolan.
I am here.
Obviously, George, you with us? Cyril, you with us? Mr. Mayor, you with us? Maybe they're taking.
Ms. Mayor is on.
Okay. Okay, great. Is Mr. Chafe with us?
His image is still up, so.
Okay. It just comes down to, you know, is he on?
In the room.
All right. So Mr. Chafe, can you give us a heads up? You with us? Unmute him? Is there any movement in the picture?
He's on. He just texted me. He's with us.
Okay. Is there a way to get him to verbally give us a cue?
I cannot speak for him.
Okay.
Here, Tom.
Okay, great. Just making sure that we've got everyone a voice recognition type of situation. So that tells me everyone's on. Moving on to where we are, which is discussion for reopening plan.
Mr. Chairman.
By all means, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we move forward and present to Desi option B two.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Wait a minute. Aren't we having a discussion?
The discussion comes after a second.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, now with discussion. Ms. Cobb-Lamair, you have something.
Well.
Please.
Okay, I have a few things I'd like to say.
Please.
Okay. I want to thank Dr. Hackett, Mr. Lee and all the members of the steering committee. In addition, I want to thank all the parents and teachers who have reached out via email with comments and concerns. Please note that I have done my best to read them all and try to respond, but as you can imagine, I have been inundated. So I apologize to anyone I have not yet got back to. Over the past few school committee meetings, we have given a snapshot of three hybrid plans before us. I agree there is no perfect plan and that no matter which plan we choose, that plan must have a lot more details before implementation. I also agree that our remote learning during the spring was insufficient and unsuccessful on many levels. So that any remote learning during the fall must be robust and must include mostly synchronized instruction. I envision that teachers would be able to live stream from their classrooms to students in their homes. I also believe that in-person learning is incredibly important. Plan A is collaboratively developed by 60-plus members of the steering committee. These members represent educators, parents, administrators, nurses and health professionals. Plan A offers our youngest students as well as those with the most needs an opportunity to be physically in school and to build a rapport. Once built, that rapport would help support students and allow them to best access the remote piece of their education. Plan A gives us the best opportunity to get all safety protocols down and pat and still get students back into in-person learning, but in a more cautious and methodical way in which we can monitor and assess our procedures that neither of the B plans do. This plan would offer a slow and sustainable, safe approach to learning. On the other hand, B one and B two were quickly put together in response to Governor Baker's expectations. Those expectations were based on a map of cities and towns and color-coded for COVID risk. However, as I mentioned at the last school committee meeting, our educators, school staff and even some of our students travel from red zones. Desi, CDC and WHO warn against relying on one single metric to open schools. These expectations are guidelines and Desi Commissioner Riley agrees that no one needs to change their plans based on this. Further and most importantly, Plan B is not well thought out or at least or at least feasible. Bringing too many students or teachers and staff to in-person learning too quickly will have dire effects on our students, families, teachers and community. At the middle school level and high school levels, some teachers teach as many as five sections totaling as much as 120 students. If those students are split into cohorts, then teachers would have about 55 students on one day and 55 students on the next. And all of these same students will see their science, math, English and other teachers as well. Never mind the logistics of getting buses to and from 10 different schools each day. I'm not an educator or an infectious disease expert, but a parent of a 17-year-old, soon to be a senior and a 14-year-old, soon to be a freshman, both at Braintree High School. I have spent months reading Desi and CDC guidelines for reopening schools. I've been talking to our local health officials and educating myself by paying close attention to the science, local, state and national data. I have spent weeks reading or replying to emails with concerns and questions. I have learned that we could put ourselves in our community in a potential disaster if we try to rush the opening process. My best understanding of science as a layperson leads me to conclude that school districts should begin slowly and to pay attention to all of the metricses. I can't speak for every member of the school committee, but I am hopeful that we all share the same goals. One of mine is finding the safest possible way to maintain high standards for teaching and learning of our students. I know that no matter what decision is made, that we will not be able to please everyone. It's clear that both parents and educators want to keep their children safe in a learning environment they deserve, even if they don't actually agree on the way to go about it. Balancing the physical and emotional health of our students and staff in the midst of this pandemic is an immense task. Based on all these factors, I strongly believe that Plan A is the safest and most sustainable for all students. Thank you.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair, are there any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
By all means, Ms. Saros.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hackett and Mr. Lee for working on these plans day and night steering committee of which Jen and I are a part of. I also want to speak to those parents that have emailed and called regarding our reopening plans. Thank you for reaching out and I have thoroughly taken every side into consideration. It is this type of participation that it takes to get things done and to get it done in the right manner. As many have said, there is no easy solution to getting the students back to school, but we need to make the safest decision for everyone involved. I'm a mother to three students within BPS. I formerly worked as a nurse in the Braintree School District and currently am a nurse at a local nursing home that has seen its worst days in the last six months. It was a scary time where a lot of residents and staff ended up getting COVID, but a majority made it through and are all in recovery. I myself had COVID in April along with one of my children and thankfully we are fine. We found out in the last two weeks that my husband had it too, but was one of the lucky ones who was asymptomatic. I do not say this to scare anyone, but I say it as a resident that knows you can successfully make it through a pandemic, moving slowly, taking proper precautions, being flexible and adjusting to the changing environment. The reopening steering committee includes over 60 members of the community that includes administration, teachers, numerous health professionals, parents and more. We have worked aggressively in four different groups for the last two months, trying to come up with the answer to every question. In the end, we found it is critical that we move slowly and be methodical about opening the schools. I know parents are anxious about getting their children back to school as I am, but there are many children, parents, teachers and staff that have mixed emotions and are scared to get back. Back in March, they were ripped from the normalcy of attending school Monday through Friday and nothing has been normal since. I understand why people want and need to get back. We must realize that the new normal includes masks, staying socially distant at six feet apart and new protocols for when a student or staff member shows symptoms. Rushing into opening 10 schools does not take the steering committee's work into consideration when we are helping to mitigate the spread of this virus. From a nursing perspective within the schools, if a nurse is dealing with a diabetic who has a low blood sugar and a student who is sent down with COVID at the same time, what becomes the priority? With the new guidelines, the nurse has to don her personal protective equipment and get that child to the isolation immediately, leaving that diabetic student. Now, how can the nurse be in two places at once? There is currently only one nurse within each of the elementary schools. Working collaboratively between these schools consolidating would help in teaching the nurses how we are going to work this out. The biggest question that kept coming up during these committee meetings and continuously does is that testing takes a minimum of five to seven days due to the inaccuracy of a rapid test. Without proper testing and results in a timely manner, how is this all going to work if we open 10 schools? Using one or two schools will help us to understand how this entire process is going to work, assess the situations we are faced with, learn from what works and what doesn't, all with the goal of eventually getting all the kids back to school safely. This is why, as a participant in the steering committee, I am pushing for us to move forward with option A. The plan has been worked on for almost two months now. Kids are resilient and I truly want the best for them. And option A is how we can get them back to school slowly, safely and with everyone's help in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saros. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I have a few. Well, first of all, we've been given a mission that's impossible. No matter what we do, there will be some that will say it isn't up to their standards. I'm disappointed that at the federal and the state level, we received, shall we say, less than optimal support. The fact that Desi wants this. What are we voting on tonight? A snapshot of where we are right now. So in other words, but it's a snapshot that's not, not going to be like a yearbook photo that's going to last forever. I believe that going forward over the next several weeks, we're going to change this. So whatever we vote for this evening is only good for this evening to give to Desi. We could conceivably in, shall we say, five, six weeks, our infection rate increases and we wind up going full remote. By the way, our distance learning or full remote will be provided and it will be improved. I've seen improvements in our distance learning thought process over the last few weeks. We will continue to improve on those things. So knowing what we're going to vote for this evening, we know that it's probably going to change one way or another. Everything from, you know, wouldn't it be nice if it just disappeared and we could all just go back to school as normal? I think that's hoping too much, but you know, there's a potential for that. We know that we could conceivably, like I said before, have an incline where we go to straight distance learning into a full remote. So this evening's vote, although it's important, I think it's important for people to realize that, one, yes, we are voting on a hybrid, but the distance learning part to that is available to everyone and anyone that does not feel comfortable with what we vote on. So with that being said.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may.
Saros, please.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to echo the previous speaker's comments. I thank all the, all the people that have been, you know, Dr. Hackett, Mr. Lee, the steering committee and all the folks that have been involved. I think that the task that was put before them with, you know, obviously the changing dynamics of what's happening with the pandemic make it very difficult. But I think there are a couple of things that we need to consider when we make this decision. And like all my colleagues, I read every email as well. I wish I could have responded to each one. But honestly, you know, the comments were mixed. And I know that's a cross-section of people that have a comment on, on the issue. So, you know, I want to look at it that way and not take it as a poll because I know it isn't a poll. But I think we have to, you know, we have to look at the merits of each one of these plans and take into account how we address all our students. And I think, you know, the challenges that I have with option A to be, you know, completely open and transparent is we're taking two buildings and we're putting children that don't belong in either one of those buildings into them. Now, I understand how that's a phased approach in some people's minds. In my mind, it's not a great approach. You know, we're asking staff to go to buildings that they're not equipped to work in. You know, they have their resources and everything in other buildings. And I've heard, you know, some of the feedback from teachers was not completely, let's go remote or let's go with option A. There were many teachers that said option A is difficult because there's multiple transitions. So we need to, you know, we need to consider that when we think about how we're going to vote. The second thing is we're giving everyone a choice. We're giving parents a choice if they're nervous, if they don't believe that it's right for their child to be in school, to pick a full remote option. So we're not forcing people to come back into the building if they don't want to come back into the building. You know, I think we, you know, we've seen what other school districts have done and it's all over the place. There's full remotes, there's hybrids, there's full back-to-school, I think in Lawrence. And the city of Boston just announced a plan very similar to B two. So, you know, I take a little exception that people question where Plan B two came from. We really should be sitting here tonight looking at the three plans that Desi talked about. A full remote plan, we never really saw that. Some type of hybrid plan and a full back-to-school plan. You know, as, as one of the previous speakers said, we're looking at a snapshot in time. Today, with the knowledge that we have, I think option B two is a safe option. And there are folks on this, in this meeting that have, have confirmed that, that it's a safe option. So, you know, again, I think we can respectfully disagree and I, you know, totally understand the feelings of my colleagues, but we're doing what we think is best for all the children and all the parents to have a choice between either going back to school on the 16th of September or staying home. September or staying home. So I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kukoris. I believe, Ms. Dolan, did you have a comment?
I did, thank you.
By all means, you have the floor.
See me politely raising my hand?
No worries at all. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. So this is a very difficult night for everyone involved in Braintree Public Schools. So no matter what is decided, there will be regions of parents and teachers that are likely to be unhappy in some way. But voting tonight means that we can move forward as a community and develop the best plan for Braintree students, and for that, I am grateful. I wanted to share my thoughts on how I came to the decision on my vote. First, I want to say that I truly appreciate the work of the administration and the reopening committee, and I'm also grateful for all the emails that we received from parents and teachers passionately and clearly articulating their hopes for this school year. While, like my colleagues, I haven't had a chance yet to reply to all of them, I have read them all. While the circumstances are challenging, it's exciting to see parents engaged, and I hope it continues. I'd like to address a few things that came up in the emails that we received. I have to say that I find the comparison to private schools to be really tiresome and unproductive. We are a public school system. With all due respect to Braintree teachers and the BEA, you cannot compare a private school system with the system where the teachers are unionized. Private schools do not have to account for the union when they develop their plans, and that is a factor that cannot be underestimated. While I'm sure there are some exceptions, private schools also do not have to plan for children who are hungry, homeless, poor, abused, and who live in unstable and otherwise difficult home situations. It is our moral obligation as a school system, as a school committee, and as a community to educate and care for all of our children. If you do not care about Braintree children as a collective, public schooling might not be the best match for your family. Along the same lines, I would also warn parents to take with a grain of salt all the talk about what all the other towns are doing. As far as we know, many of those with more aggressive plans have not yet negotiated with their teachers' unions, and in fact, some have had to significantly pull back when ultimately that did happen. All of that said, I think everyone in Braintree would do well to extend one another some grace. I think parents and teachers are all capable of understanding the deep emotions felt on both sides when it comes to our collective kids. As a parent, of course, I want the best education for my child. But as I said in the spring, teachers are not robots that we can turn on and off at will to do our bidding. They are human beings with their own thoughts, hopes, fears, and concerns, not to mention families, just like we parents are. Personally, I could never be a teacher, if only because the moment a kid sneezed on himself and it was my job to clean up the mess, I would immediately head for the hills. Because we received so many emails, I started a spreadsheet to log the questions and did my own tally of votes across the three options. While it's interesting that many parents said everyone thinks this option is the way to go, the votes from parents were decidedly split about 50/50 across Options A and B2. For teachers, it was about 60/40 for K-12 Remote and Option A, with four votes for B2. To be very clear, none of this can be considered statistically significant or a full survey, but I wanted to document the trends across the emails that we received. In the emails, I did see a number of comments about the state of our buildings. Hopefully, you now have a clearer picture that returning students to all buildings is a reasonably safe option, but the point remains that our buildings are old. It is no coincidence that I am the vice chair of the Vote Yes for Braintree Schools Committee, working under the wonderful Lisa Heager. I hope that every single person that has concerns about our aging buildings, and you should, is preparing to vote yes, either absentee or in-person, for September 26, and that you're telling everyone you know to do the same. Do not kid yourselves, not passing this death exclusion will send us down a very difficult path. Getting this passed is absolutely critical to the future of our schools. Moving back to the topic of tonight's vote, I truly understand and sympathize with parents who want their kids to return to school. It's so hard to think about our kids not heading off in September like they always have. My son is going into the sixth grade, and while he has truly adored all of his Braintree teachers, it's pretty clear that his favorite subject is gym. He is not a kid that will particularly enjoy remote schooling at home and vastly prefers the company of his friends and teammates to his parents. I have been watching and tracking the progress of the East Middle School Project for the past two and a half years, and this was to be his chance to head into that brand-new school. I couldn't wait. I want nothing more for him to head into East Middle School this fall, but not at any cost. I will be voting for Option A tonight, and here's why. I have three primary reasons. One, the lack of transportation for grades 7 to 12 as of right now. Plan B2 provides the completely untenable circumstance of no bus transportation for many students. This is not a fault of the plan. This is because of the mandate from the state requiring distancing on the buses that amounts to about one-third normal capacity. It simply does not compute that we can open 10 schools and not offer transportation to the three largest ones. If virus trends move in the right direction and bus distancing can be adjusted by the state, those factors combined with some creative thinking will help us get kids back to all schools, but that's not what's on the table right now. Two, a slower rollout of synchronous instruction on the remote days. The updates that we heard earlier are a definite improvement and clarification on what was presented last week. Remote learning is real learning, and hybrid schedules are going to be a necessary step on the road of getting us back to full-time, in-person instruction. Having grades 4 to 12 in a remote start gives us a chance to lay the groundwork for more successful hybrid instruction in the near future. Three, an established timetable for expanding. This is an important piece of the puzzle to me, and I want to make sure that parents understand that the K3 Hybrid 412 Remote Plan is not one that is intended to stay that way for the year. By mid-October, we'll be looking at ways to start bringing more kids back to the buildings in a deliberate way. The deliberate way part of this is important. Opening the doors of all schools at once introduces real risk. If we rush this and screw it up, it could result in another quarantine, only this time it's going to be the dead of winter, and no one wants that. My vote for Option A comes with some requests. One, I would like to see the continued development and expansion of our schedule and offerings for special education students, as already mentioned. This includes our high-need students, but also those with regular IEPs and services. The concern and worry of these families is palpable and understandable. I hope that by deciding on our direction this evening, we can then begin to dig into this track and establish ways to give more hands-on instruction to our students receiving special services. Two, we look for opportunities to bring our 4 to 12 students to outdoor spaces on campus for regular check-ins and socialization. This idea came from the reopening committee work, and I am interested in seeing it pursued for obvious reasons. Three, we look to expand ways to bring in our most vulnerable students for more in-person instruction. And lastly, as previously mentioned tonight, we continue our exploration of childcare and, that was mentioned tonight, excuse me, and in the previous meeting. The pandemic has hit all working parents hard, and despite many involved fathers active in their children's care and schooling, including the one in my house, data shows that it has had a disproportionate effect on working mothers. So I believe this is a valuable avenue to look at. I hope that every school committee member will be accountable to the public this evening and explain to detail, in detail, why they're casting their vote the way they are. I also want to say that the disrespect I have seen paid to the Braintree Public Schools administration, in particular, the superintendent, is intolerable and unwarranted. This administration has worked tirelessly and thanklessly trying to come up with the best possible scenarios to educate our kids in a safe way. Questioning the motives of these people is baseless and insulting, and I do not intend to stand idly by while it goes on. Finally, I hope that in every home, we can be positive examples to our children regardless of the vote tonight. We have a chance to model resilience, flexibility, perseverance, patience, and the ability to make the best of difficult circumstances for our kids. I encourage you to share your feelings of frustration with your spouse or your friends instead, or you can email or message me, because anyone who has talked or texted with me in the past few months has heard me say the words, "Everything is terrible," and I really mean that. And it's okay to feel that way and express it, but please remember that you help determine your child's attitude. We can be there for our kids to validate and manage their frustrations and fears while not compounding them. Let's lean on each other as a community of adults so that we can stay positive for our kids as we shepherd them through these challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dolan. I believe Ms. McGrath has her hand up and will be recognized. And then I believe Mr. Chafe had something to say. Ms. McGrath?
Yes, thank you. I do want to offer you a purely public health perspective on this.
Please.
Just, I guess the question is, purely from a public health perspective, can the school safely reopen to operate under all three of the proposed plans for staff and students? And the answer is yes. And let me follow that by saying, following all the mitigation protocols that have been put in place and that will be put in place, and that includes, but is not limited to, under the Harvard START version, student class sizes will be smaller. The school department is utilizing the six-foot social distancing protocol. Face coverings will be required and be utilized by staff and students. The school department has undergone an HVAC system audit, and they have also placed component repairs and replacements in place by the Naresco team that you have onboard. The school department is also in the process of undertaking an air exchange assessment within all of the school buildings. There are increased sanitation and disinfection methods and protocols that are being implemented and will continue to be implemented on a daily basis in each of the school buildings, in the occupied spaces in those buildings, and in the restrooms. There is installation of equipment that will take place as needed in the schools, installation of hand sanitizer stations throughout each of the school buildings, the restroom use protocols and signage will be in place. Common hallway directional signals will also be clearly outlined and posted within the schools. Your school nursing division protocols, they've already been established. You have a great team onboard and in place with your school nurses, and I cannot, again, express enough about them and their professionalism and their extensive knowledge on COVID-19 and other infectious diseases. Additionally, health monitoring by parents and guardians will continue to occur, as well as in the school settings by the nursing staff. Remote learning is and always has been an option on the table for parents and guardians to choose if they do not, if they prefer that version of it. So between March 13th, when the schools closed, and today, we've learned an awful lot about this infectious disease. So there are new protocols that have been put in place for many different sector-specific institutions for them to safely reopen, and that includes the schools. So I will tell you as well, and many of you may know this, is that my department, both the Building Division and the Health Division, we routinely perform inspections in the schools. And that had occurred well prior to COVID, and it will continue well after we get through this unusual and difficult time. Again, it's a very fluid situation, but I feel like we have a great staff and team on the ground that any one of the three options can provide for a safe return to school.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGrath. I've personally seen your group work and have always been impressed with their professionalism and their willingness to go above and beyond for our school systems. I've been in meetings on Saturday mornings where we've had inspections, obviously outside the usual office hours. So thanks again for your input. I believe, Mr. Chafe, you had something you want to say?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tevin. I would be speaking in favor of Plan B2. The reason being is, I don't believe we're going to get, our rate is going to get much lower than it is now. And I believe when I shut down in March to now, we need to evaluate where these kids are. We can't just evaluate them over a computer. So we need to get these kids in the schools so our teachers can evaluate them. We need to see who's doing what. And then B2, the staff and the kids are all used to the school that they're in. The teachers all know the students. The students know the teachers. I just think it's, we're not going to get another shot at it. The virus is probably going to come back, and we probably will be going to some form of remote. So I'd be favor of B2.
Thank you, Mr. Chafe. Mr. Mayor, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
By all means.
So our number one, my number one priority is the student's safety and health. So that was the first thing that we were looking at when making this decision. So in regards to our numbers today and our new protocols that we put in place, what we've worked since March 13th on, and learning and coming up with solutions so that our students can get back into a classroom, even if it's for, even if it's for a short period of time. Education of our students is so important, and having the remote piece, if people want to use it, you know, as the 100% of the time, that is an option. But I think that we lost so much in the spring. So what we did, my administration did, is we have worked with Mary Beth, Health Department, all of my staff, we have worked since that date to come up with plans, to come up with changes in behavior. We did the lockdown. We went through the spike. We use masks now. We have changed so many things since March 13th that by bringing a small number of students back, which is the case, we're not filling up classrooms, we're social distancing the children six feet, which DESI had only required three. So we're doing everything necessary to provide the healthiest environment for our students to be able to learn. So at this point, I am supporting Option B2. And I will say that we are in a situation where we will be assessing on a weekly basis, even before we get to this point of starting the school year. So this is, at this point, the snapshot, as you've heard previous speakers say, that gives us the opportunity to use Option B to have some in-school learning for our students. If things change, we will adapt to those changes, and we will do what is in the best interest of the students, 100%. So the commitment of my office, me as mayor, and the Health Department is to assure the health and safety of our students and make sure that they get the best possible education. And that's why I will be supporting Option B2. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will go back to the original motion made by the mayor and seconded as far as moving forward with B2. Roll call, vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros? Nay, okay. Ms. Cobb-Lamair?
No.
No. Ms. Dolan?
Nay.
Nay. Mr. Kukoris?
George, you with us?
Sorry, I was on mute. Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes. But let's talk about this a little bit here. Like I said before, it's a snapshot going forward. I fully anticipate this moving. I fully anticipate the rest of us talking amongst ourselves as to, you know, what changes may occur. This is just the plan we're giving to DESI. So thank you for your patience, and for the people that phoned in this evening, thank you for your patience and your questions. We will continue to update our frequently asked questions on our website and making sure that website and the questions grow. And we look forward to receiving emails from people that have specific concerns about their situations to try and get to them. I guess now we'll look towards, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. Okay, roll call, vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kukoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Good evening.